Brunner.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Holder.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Present.
And Mayor Keeley.
Here. A quorum having been established, we will move to statement of disqualification. Any member have a statement of disqualification on closed session? Nope, all right, good enough. This would be the opportunity for anyone who's with us in chambers or anyone online who may wish to comment on today's closed session. To do so, we have two items. Item one, there are three claims against the city. Item two is real property negotiation. Item three is conference with labor negotiators. Anyone wish to comment on this in closed session? Do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush?
No one with their hand up.
No one with their hand up. What we will be doing is we will be going into closed session. We will be there for some period of time. I suspect we will be back out here about 2:30. It could take longer. If it's less time than that, we will still reconvene at 2:30. We could be longer, but we will not reconvene earlier than 2:30. At this point, we will adjourn into closed session. The hour of 2:30 having arrived and the city council having completed its business in closed session, we're back in open session and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Holder.
Here.
O'Hara.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Keeley.
Present. A quorum having been established, we will move on to oral communications. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the city council on a matter under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. Good afternoon, Mr. Philip. Good afternoon, sir.
Anyway, you probably guessed I have strong and negative opinions about a government when I feel they're abusing their authority on the socialist subsidized price control, affordable housing issue, as well as the related constant barrage of new fees and tax increase initiatives suing from this government that wants its control and income ever more expanded along socialist and DEI theories. I find the ethics lacking and how some have gone about promoting that. It is against state law code 8314 to use taxpayer resources to lobby the public for votes on any issue, and your actions are razor thin near a violation of that, as unfortunately a great many cities also are. When you pay consultants, for instance, to do surveys to determine the most favorable language to pass a ballot measure or expend any city resources helping craft faux citizen initiatives, that's pretty close to an ethical, if not actual, violation I spoke of. It's a kind of lobbying. Constant supportive letters published in the Sentinel with a government person byline title also seems like blatant lobbying. Recently, a mailed survey went out that asked people to rank language they found most favorable for prospective bond ballot measure on vector control. I doubt anyone except the government would have been behind it. Maybe the pretense of conveying information to voters is how some sneaky cities defy the law, but it's obviously to me a misuse of public funds. I would never have dreamed I'd be speaking to the city council seven years ago, but when Sandy Brown motioned to pass an identical version of the outrageous and overwhelming defeated Measure M, ran control one ordinance at a time in full defiance of the people's two-thirds vote, no vote, I knew some council members aren't representatives of the people, but they're actors on a stage running cover for the city for their own agendas. We've been treated to various versions of vote lobbying on the public by the city using paid consultants or using city resources on sales taxes, affordable housing bonds. Consultants aren't shy like TBWB Strategies, for instance, that was employed by San Francisco to pass a sales tax increase and which said on its website, "TBWB helps you package and pass a ballot measure to meet your needs by efficiently getting your message out to persuade voters and mobilize your base of support. Please consider not doing this anymore."
Ms. Bush? No. Mr. Ewing, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Yeah, thank you. My name is James Ewing Whitman. It was a fun conversation we had yesterday, Mr. Keeley. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, sir.
I spent some time looking for more copies of the Santa Cruz comic news. I found some at the bakery. You know, five years ago, yesterday, and five years ago, two, two days ago, I'd come in here on Mondays. I like to look at what's on the calendar, seeing what's going on. Unfortunately, now I'm usually the only one doing it. So five years ago, two years ago, there was a live meeting. I came in on Tuesday for that live meeting. It was kind of rainy, and that's really the only time I've seen the previous police chief, Andy Mills, behave like a panicked child. It's the politest words I can use. I've engaged a lot with Andy. So what happened? This room closed down for about two years. You know, it's made me start going to the supervisors' meeting, but how many people have been harmed by the, since I gave up on being here because the Zoom was kind of ridiculous? It was fun, but it was just ridiculous. How many people have been harmed by people like Gail Newell, people like the previous sheriff, Jim Harb, laying on his back and peeing on himself rather than standing up for the people? I got 44 seconds. So I don't always like to be such a killjoy. I just seem to be good at pointing out some things, you know? I showed up here almost six years ago. Why are we allowing military frequency weapons in civilian locations? So when the scamdemic started, Gail Newell put out a six-page document, I don't know, page three or four, there are like 28 or 29 reasons why you could be out in public, and I definitely matched five of those, but pretty much seven. So the infrastructure that literally exploded as far as the frequency weapons, and that's what they are, frequency weapons, was crazy. You know, the fiber optic got finished within about two years. You got to wonder why so many people are less than they could be.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Anyone else in chambers wish to comment under oral communication? Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. I am Unhe Lengus, and I am pleased that one item on today's agenda is a mayoral proclamation regarding Eid al-Fitr Day. In line with that, I am here to advocate for the UCSC Student Protester for Palestine Liberation, a person of color set to be arraigned this Friday on petty charges immediately after Trump sent warning letters to 60 universities, including four UC schools, over what the administration says are failures to protect Jewish students. Last December-January, I was one of four drafters of a community letter to Chancellor LaRive, signed by eight local organizations and over 80 individuals, which entreated that the university divest from its investments in arms manufacturers and to ensure full and equal rights to free speech and assembly for its student and faculty protesters. The letter was virtually ignored. In the concurrent ACLU campus bans case, which looks rather trumped up, Judge Kogliadi of Jewish descent, who knows Chancellor LaRive professionally, seems to be siding with UCSC defendants over our civil liberties. UC's free speech policies, called time, place, and manner policies, are written in a way to crush all pro-Palestinian protest as antisemitism. Why in the name of humanity is protesting carnage in Gaza, which has horrifically resumed being punished? UC is viciously complicit with the IDF's booby-trapping of cans of food such that children are brought into the hospital with their hands dangling and face shot up. The UCSC protesters should be applauded rather than scapegoated and punished for speaking out against genocide. Law professor Catherine Frank says that Columbia University has become part of the apparatus of chilling speech critical of Israel and the US, and it's not just managing a difficult situation, it's actually implementing that censorship in the name of the university's mission. UCSC is joining this vicious bandwagon, shame. We can't let SC go VC.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment under oral communication? Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
My name is Bob Russell with a last and urgent appeal to you powerful people to intercede on with State Parks regarding what they're going to do to Seabright Overlook. Their plan for Seabright Overlook includes a blocking fence to prevent people's access to the southernmost point of view. I assure you, from overlooking the park for 10 years, their plan will fail. People will go out to that view anyway, no matter what the state may do. Even if they put barbed wire, people will either cut through it or go around, but they will still get out to the point. Their plan to obstruct may well lead to another falling death from the unsafe parkway. Let's do it right. The park is an unsung tourist destination. Hundreds of people visit every day during the summer, spring, and fall. Many of these visitors, new to the area, will go out to that viewpoint, no matter what the obstacles, no matter what the state may do. It's just too obvious and tempting. We can do better. The alternative plan with which you're familiar, long ago approved by the Seabright Neighborhood Association, provides full access for disabled people all the way to the bank of the river and future provision for safe access all the way to the southernmost viewpoint. And stairs to the beach for surfers may also be provided to protect the cliff face. It's urgent that the city council contact Chris Spora at State Parks, demand that the alternate plan by the visionary architect Greg Cole be made the adopted plan. If the state implement their inferior and short-sighted plan, it will fail. The best features of Seabright Overlook will be lost to the state's mediocrity and lack of vision. Please intercede now and do it the right, compliant way. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Anyone else under oral communication? Anyone else online? We are completed now with oral communication. Now we're on item four. We're going to have on items four, five, and six, brief presentations. These are mayoral proclamations of various kinds, and members of the city council will be presenting on those. Let me start with the mayoral proclamation declaring April as Arts and Culture Month, and I will recognize Councilmember Brunner for presentation. Councilmember?
Is anyone here for that proclamation? Thank you. Jim Brown, please step forward. Whereas in April 2019, the California Legislature established the first Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, and April 2025 will be the seventh annual statewide celebration. And whereas the city of Santa Cruz, California believes that the arts are essential to our thriving community, with this year's celebration focusing on health, healing, and hope. And whereas the arts have been shown to positively impact health by reducing depression, lowering stress hormones, and increasing longevity through regular engagement and attendance at cultural events. And the arts foster hope by building a sense of community and personal fulfillment, inspiring optimism and resilience in the face of challenges. And whereas the arts are an economic driver in our city, generating $38 million in economic activity, supporting nearly 1,000 jobs and contributing over $2 million in tax revenues. And whereas the city's Department of Economic Development and Housing, the City Arts Commission, and the city council in collaboration with the Arts Council Santa Cruz County have led local efforts to advance the arts through programs, partnerships, and community-building initiatives, such as the citywide art installation for upcoming Santa Cruz Pride Parade 50th Anniversary this year, and the Black Lives Matter mural initiative led by Santa Cruz Equity Club. And whereas the city values the leadership of state and national arts organizations, such as California for the Arts, the California Arts Council, and Americans for the Arts. Now therefore, on behalf of Fred Keeley, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, I, Sonia Brunner, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in the City of Santa Cruz, and I encourage all citizens to support the arts and join us in this celebration. And I wanted to welcome from our Arts Council Santa Cruz County, Jim Brown. I will also be attending as a council member the annual California Arts and Culture Summit in Sacramento this year in April. I attended last year with a representative from the Arts Council, as well as some artists from our city. So welcome, if there's anything you'd like to say, and I'll bring this over to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to acknowledge that we're incredibly lucky in Santa Cruz to have such an incredible creative community, and that's in significant part because the city council of Santa Cruz has been so generous in supporting the arts and in recognizing its value and importance. So thank you for your ongoing and continued support.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being here. We are on item five. This is a mayoral proclamation declaring March as procurement month, and Councilmember O'Hara is going to be making a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for stepping up. Hopefully, these are our procurement professionals here at the city of Santa Cruz. When the mayor asked me to do this, I thought about the importance of procurement within the city of Santa Cruz, but honestly, with any local government jurisdiction, if you look at today's agenda, nearly every or every single item that we take on has a procurement piece to it. It's behind the scenes. If it's not done effectively, we shut down. Literally, we shut down. And as procurement is an important and really critical piece of city work, it provides equitable access to goods and services for folks that we contract with. It ensures that we are, you know, working with local distributors and vendors, and it is such a critical piece of the day-to-day work that we do. So I really appreciate having an opportunity to share this proclamation with you. So whereas contracting and procurement professionals play a vital role in the acquisition of a broad range of goods and services essential for the effective operation of the city of Santa Cruz, whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, the public procurement professionals add value to government agencies throughout the state of California by performing such functions as developing procurement strategies, cultivating collaborative relationships with the business community and others within their organizations, consulting on best practices, identifying opportunities for savings, maintaining compliance with rules, regulations, policies, and procedures, and assisting with the development and/or administration of contracts. And whereas these public procurement professionals recognize, support, and practice the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency as fundamental tenets of their profession. And whereas the National Procurement Month provides the opportunity to further educate the general public, elected officials, and vendors regarding the impact of public procurement, and celebrate the contributions of those individuals dedicated to the public procurement profession. A lot of alliterations in this proclamation. So now for, therefore, I, Fred Keeley, I, Susie O'Hara, on behalf of Fred Keeley, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as procurement month in the city of Santa Cruz. And I'll come up here and hand you the proclamation. If you have something that you would like to share, we'd be happy to hear it.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Councilmember O'Hara, and city council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize March as procurement month in the city of Santa Cruz. This is our purchasing division here at the city of Santa Cruz. We are one of six divisions that report into our finance director, the finance department. This is a team of procurement professionals responsible for issuing solicitations, managing citywide contracts. We oversee the city's procurement card program, surplus disposal program, and we support all city staff on a variety of procurement topics for training. This year, we have a lot to celebrate in procurement, and I'm, because of time, going to limit it to three things. The first is I want to recognize one of our team members, Lily Ann Lane, here. She's one of our buyers on the team. Lily, this year not only achieved one, but she got two professional certifications in public procurement. She's a CPPB, a Certified Public Procurement Buyer, and a CPCC, Certified Purchasing Card Professional. So way to go, Lily. The second thing I want to make you all aware of is in October of last year, the city was recognized with OpenGov's High Performance Government Award, which recognizes innovative public sector organizations that leverage modern tools and practices to improve processes and foster efficiency. And we were awarded this for our implementation of our e-procurement platform, OpenGov, which is how we issue more solicitations, competitive contracts for vendors in our community to participate on. So Lily has that award here for you to see today. It's in the finance department, if you want to come by and see it again. And then finally, our third thing is probably the one that we're most proud of. Last, last time around this year, the last time last, this time last year, we were really busy working on an application for an award, and we won it. It is the 2024 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, the AEP Award, which was awarded to the city from the National Procurement Institute. Now, out of 400, wait, 4,494 agencies in California, we're talking cities, counties, special districts, and school districts, there were only 48 that got this award last year, and the city of Santa Cruz is one of them. And then if we look on a larger scale, the whole United States and all of Canada, only 73 cities got this award, okay? And we're one of them, and it's our first time winning this award, and we hope to bring more back home to you to see in the future. So we have a lot to celebrate this year. So thank you, Mayor Keeley, Councilmember O'Hara, and members of the council for this recognition. I also want to take time to thank our city manager, Matt Huffaker, Assistant City Manager, Michelle Templeton, and our Finance Director, Elizabeth Cabell, for their continued support, and to all city staff who are continuing to apply procurement best practices in their work each and every day. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. We are on item number six. This is a mayoral proclamation that will be presented by Councilmember Trigaro. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very happy to take this time to recognize an important celebration that's been observed by many of our community over the last month and will be also celebrating coming forward, and that is the holy month of Ramadan and our upcoming celebration of Eid al-Fitr. And in this proclamation, we've chosen the day of March 30th to celebrate that, as the community still continues to watch the moon, which will determine whether Eid will fall on the 30th or the 31st. Today, community members and friends from our Islamic Center of Santa Cruz are here to receive this proclamation. I welcome you, and I appreciate you all being here with us. I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas Eid al-Fitr, or the festival of the breaking of the fast, is a joyous holiday celebrated by Muslims worldwide, marking the end of the holy month of Ramadan, a period of fasting, of prayer, and of reflection. And whereas Ramadan is a time of spiritual growth, self-discipline, and of community service, during which Muslims fast from dawn until sunset, engage in charitable giving, and deepen their commitment to faith and compassion. And whereas Eid al-Fitr is a celebration of gratitude, generosity, and unity, during which families and communities come together to share meals, exchange gifts, and extend kindness to those in need. And whereas the city of Santa Cruz recognizes the culture and religious diversity of our community and values the contributions of our Muslim residents, who enrich the city through their civic engagement, entrepreneurship, and community service. And whereas acknowledging Eid al-Fitr fosters inclusivity and understanding, reinforcing the city's commitment to being and continuing as a welcoming and supportive place for all faiths and all backgrounds. I, Gabriella Trigaro, along with Mayor Fred Keeley and my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim March 30th, 2025, as Eid al-Fitr Day in the city of Santa Cruz, and I encourage all citizens to join me in extending warm wishes to all those who celebrate this sacred occasion, and to learn about and honor the diverse traditions that make our community so vibrant and strong. Thank you. Would you like to say some words?
Yes, please. Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Fred Kelly. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, and good afternoon. Ramadan mubarak. City Council Gabriella Trigaro, Mayor Fred Kelly, and the rest of the city council members. I would like to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing the month of Ramadan and Eid al-Fitr in Santa Cruz County, in Santa Cruz. My name is Hussain Ayat Ahmed. I am the president of the Islamic Center of Santa Cruz, and I am truly honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of members of the Santa Cruz Muslim community. Here today, I'm joined a couple of members, Sister Madiha, she's our treasurer, our Sister Asma, she's our teacher for Sunday School, and our Sister Hanan, she's one of our active members as well. Here, my daughter Khadija, my son Ibrahim, and my wife, she has to do daycare, so in the back. The Islamic Center of Santa Cruz was established in 1996 as a nonprofit, a non-political, a religious, charitable, cultural, and educational organization. Our mission is to serve and educate the collective needs of Santa Cruz residents regarding the Islamic faith and promote cooperation, understanding between Muslims, between Muslim residents, and the greater community of Santa Cruz. Ramadan is a time of reflection, is a time of spiritual growth, is a time of community and unity. During these times, unfortunately, during these times like this, when advocates around the country are raising concerns of increasing anti-Muslim sentiment, we must continue to build bonds of solidarity through mutual respect and understanding. As we celebrate this holy month, we're not gonna hide it, we're not gonna fake it. As we celebrate Ramadan in the midst of trauma, we feel deeply trauma, we feel witnessing our brothers and sisters suffering, especially in Palestine and in Sudan and many other places. I want to be optimistic. Let us embrace the values of compassion, empathy, and generosity that define this special time, and reaffirm our shared commitment to building a more harmonious and inclusive Santa Cruz for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Councilmember Trigaro. We are on item number seven. This is a presentation by the acting chair of the Subcommittee of our Sister City Program. Someone to present on this item?
Mayor, this one was going to be at around 4:00 P.M.
About 4:00 P.M. Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate your help on that. Presiding Officer, announcements, I have none. Statements of disqualification on the consent of regular agenda. Councilmember?
I will be recusing myself from items 25 and 26 out of an abundance of caution in relation to my employment with the Downtown Association of Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else on disqualifications? Additions or deletions to the agenda? Madam Clerk, do we have additions or deletions?
I have an item, no.
Okay. Very good. City Attorney, report on closed session. Mr. Kandadi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keeley, members of the city council. There are three items in closed session this afternoon that commenced at 1:30 P.M. in the Courtyard Conference Room. Item one was a conference with legal counsel concerning liability claims. Those are the claims of Stacy Pagaling, Frances David Magnin. Francis David Magnusson, and John Clifford Edwards. Those are also listed this afternoon on your consent calendar for council action as item number 16. Item two is real property negotiations. The property, approximately 8.15 acres, located on Mount Herman Road in Scotts Valley, California, commonly known as the Sky Park Property. Owner, city of Santa Cruz. Negotiating parties, the city of Santa Cruz and the city of Scotts Valley. That item was also listed this afternoon for council action on your consent calendar as item number 13. Item three was a conference with labor negotiators concerning the following bargaining groups: SEIU temps, SEIU service employees, mid managers OE3, supervisors OE3, fire management, fire IAFF, police management, the Police Officers Association, and executives. There was no reportable action on any of those items.
Thank you, sir. On the meeting calendar, Ms. Bush?
I have no changes, no.
Very good, thank you. We are going to now take up the consent agenda. For those of you that might not be familiar with it, we will be taking up items nine through 23 inclusive on one motion, one motion. What I will do is give an opportunity to council members first to either pull or comment or ask a question on an item on consent. I will then extend that courtesy to members of the public who are with us in chambers and anyone who may be online and wish to make a comment. If you wish to make a comment, excuse me, on the consent agenda, and let's say there are two or three items on the consent agenda about which you would like to make comment, your total time available is three minutes, whether it's one item or five items. You could tip up to three minutes to comment on consent. So I'm going to start on my left and work my way around. Let me start with Councilmember Golda, Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull number 18, item 18, and I have--
Was that 16?
18.
18, thank you.
And just a short comment on item 12. I had a, uh, thank you. I had an opportunity to engage with staff, both Director Lipscomb and Director Elliott on 18, which we'll all talk about once we get to that one. But to item 12, which is the MOU between the city of Santa Cruz Digital Nest and Santa Cruz Works for the implementation of a tech apprenticeship workforce development program. This is a wonderful program that I'm very excited to support. In my conversations with Director Lipscomb, I did have some questions that she answered for me that I think would be helpful for the rest of the council to hear. The questions that arose for me while I was reading through this was, why can't we have a local preference for city of Santa Cruz youth? And I had intended to pull the document, the item to hopefully address that, but in Director Lipscomb's answer to my question, I've been kind of re-guided around this. So if you wouldn't mind, Bonnie, providing that context for the rest of the council, I think it might be helpful for everybody.
Ms. Lipscomb, good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember O'Hara, the discussion we were having was about whether or not we could have a preference for local youth in the workforce development program. And the background I provided relates to the grant funding. And so we received funding through our Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant through the State Department of Housing and Community Development for PacStation North. And they had a specific requirement that eligible applicants into the workforce development program must be from disadvantaged census tracts in the broader region. So we can't limit it to Santa Cruz youth specifically, but we have a number of eligible census tracts in Santa Cruz that will, will be available and will make them eligible to be able to apply. So specifically, the whole of downtown is in an eligible census tract, so any residents in the downtown area, including our affordable projects, the beach flats area, the lower ocean area, are all eligible census tracts within the city.
That's it for me, thank you, Mayor.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks for asking that question. That was a question that I had, but I did want to comment on item 12 and item 19.
Please proceed.
Yes, very excited to see item 12, the MOU with city of Santa Cruz Digital Nest and Santa Cruz Works. This is very much aligned with our Children Youth Bill of Rights. And just last night, Councilmember Golda and I held a family and youth community meeting, and this issue came up. Opportunities for vocational training and job opportunities that would lead to job opportunities that are local came up last night, and it came up two years ago when we had the community meeting. So really, really excited to see our city commit to this partnership. So that's my comment on 12. And number 19, which is the Downtown Intersection Improvement Plan Revisions and Environmental Determination with the Metro Transit Improvement Agreement with our city. Just a brief comment, I sit on the Metro Board and know that this has been in the works for a while. This is part of the Rapid Corridor Study that the Metro District did. And, you know, we've implemented part of it, and this is, this is to expand our ability to, the Metro's ability to provide fast and efficient services to the whole community. And it's really part of our whole re-envisioning how we use public transportation and the intersection between public transportation and housing. So it's part of a larger system. It may seem small, but it's really a big thing that we're doing here with this restriping plan. So just hopeful that the council will support that.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Newsom?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment on item 12 as well and item 13, 14. On item 12, I just want to associate myself with the comments of my colleagues, Councilmember O'Hara and Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson, and say I think this will be a great, wonderful program that will help develop a diverse future workforce in our community and contribute to a thriving community by training and then connecting underserved youth to jobs in a well-paying industry. So very happy to support this item, and I look forward to watching it being implemented. And on item 13 and item 14, really excited to see both of these items on our agenda. Combined, these items will provide over $19 million in additional funding to the downtown library project, bringing a world-class library, a childcare center for working-class families, and 124 units of affordable housing much more, much, much more closer to being a reality in our community. And I can't wait for the groundbreaking on this project this summer and just extremely excited about the progress that we have made on this project and very happy to support both items. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner, on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I had a comment on 18, but since it's pulled, I'll wait for that item. And I had a comment on item 20.
Please proceed.
I can make that item on comment 20 now. Item 20 is the Rail Trail Segments 8 and 9 Budget Adjustment with Public Works. Rail Trail Segment 8 and 9 is a section of the Rail Trail that will be through District 4, which is your district, and District 2, which is my district, along Murray Street, Lower Seabright Area, and over to 17th Avenue in County area. This item is a budget adjustment that has no impact on the general fund, and it really looks like it will be an item that will help determine some new construction costs with the design changes that have been made, and it's a really exciting project, and there's been a lot of support in the districts for this. So good work to Public Works for the timely appropriation of funds from Measure D. Thank you.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Thank you, Mayor. I also am very supportive and echo my colleagues' comments on item 12, the tech apprenticeship contract. I would recommend including metrics about how many youth are served, specifically Santa Cruz youth are served, and including some sort of program evaluation in there. On item 13, I also, like my colleagues, I'm really happy to support this. This sale has taken, I think it was set over 40 years to make, you know, it's been underway, so it's really, really nice to see that happening. And once again, I'm enthusiastic on item 20, Rail Trail Segments 8 and 9. You know, I, I look forward to getting rid of my leased car that I have currently and hopping on the rail in the future. For item 23, which will be my last comment, you know, this is also something new to me as a new council member, and these definitions of old growth are all pretty much new to me. And so I guess my only remaining comment is that I'm hopeful that, or maybe it's a question perhaps too, will the council receive advance notice of proposed harvest? How do we get updates as, as the policy--
Let me make sure, are you on 25 at this point?
I'm on 23.
Thank you.
Yes. You know, will, will the council get updates before a timber harvesting plan is reviewed also? And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there's anyone who is with us who wishes to comment on the consent agenda. This would be the opportunity. And if we have folks online, Ms. Bush, should we, with their hands up? Not at this time. Mr. Ewing, good afternoon, on the consent agenda, sir.
Yeah, my name's James Julian Lipman. I'd like to comment on four items. 10, the minutes, 20, the Public Works Rail Trail Segment, 22, the Santa Cruz Soquel Creek Water District Inner Mutual Aid Agreement, and then 23, the modifications to forest management. So as far as the minutes, you know, I think it would be really useful if members of the public could make comments after the proclamations. And for example, the group, there were like 20 individuals here that spoke about the violence against women. Santa Cruz could really improve their track record on that. How's that for being polite? Now, the rail trails, I found kind of interesting. I came in yesterday. It seems that RM Design Corp. on May 12, 2020, got a bid for $3,978,397. That was in 2020, so now with all the additions, it's about $900,000. And supposedly, by the spring of 2025, they'll have 60% of a design. And it's my understanding, reading the information, that the segment of 8 and 9, which is from the wharf turnaround to 17th Avenue, is only scheduled to have 2.8 million in grants when it's already got about twice as much of that just in design fees. That's an interesting question. Moving on to number 22. You know, the watershed in Santa Cruz was really pretty pristine. But, you know, everybody's dealing with what's in the chemtrails. And it's my understanding that people in this room have been given lifetime achievement awards for putting fluoride in the water, which is not something that is positive for human health development. Moving on to 23, the modifications to the forest management, that was kind of hard to decipher. Just wanted to comment on that. So going back to the minutes, I have a minute, great. The gentleman before me, who has been a small business owner in Santa Cruz for more than 30 years, he described very clearly what happened to all the businesses the last time that bridge was shut down. They all changed hands. So today was the first time that it's influenced me in driving back and forth, and I think that, I don't know what to say. That gentleman had some, I didn't confirm his research, but he seemed to have a, quite a not positive observations about that company. So what are we going to do if there are some crazy delays and what's going on? So I'll respect the time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone online, Ms. Bush? Mr. Philip, good afternoon again, sir.
I'm looking at your agenda item, but having listened to Vani Lipscomb on item 12, perhaps there's things that weren't in the agenda item. Mostly, my objections have to do with the methodology, which is kind of vague as to how these apprentices are chosen. Because in the agenda item, it talks about Hispanic people, calling them Latinx, which is an obsolete term now, according to Governor Gavin Newsom. But in, she's kind of intimating that there's a low-income qualifier that's not really clear in the agenda item. But at any rate, I'll just, I'll try and jump over things that, I'll just start reading here. I said, nobody should get preferential treatment or opportunities based on race in 2025. An apprentice program for tech sounds great, but anyone qualified should be able to apply, perhaps based on income, but definitely chosen because they are the most promising of aptitude or basic skills as an investment in the community. But again, most definitely not, and especially not solely on race, because it makes you a race discriminator. And if this grant insists that it be this way, they are also racist discriminators. Compare this to a scholarship or internship of my day. I grew up in the 60s, 70s. When I went to college in the early 70s, there were as few as a dozen four-year scholarships in the entire school district, and otherwise, one-year scholarships with students had to re-qualify for every year by continuous scholastic achieving, meaning As, real As, not the automatic trophies they hand out now, available to probably the top 1% and 5%. Private corporation tech internships also really, up to today, really are not subsidized in any way and were likewise only available to promising achievers of scholastic merit possessing some basic skills to build on. Race never played a part in that. And for your info, I'd say in the semiconductor industry that I am very familiar with, most of these interns are not white, which is the underlying victimization of a racist assumption of your proposed discriminations. Anyway, a $10,000 corporate bribe called apprenticeship plus overhead seems like about 13 grand per person privilege based solely on, according to the agenda, on race. It is insulting to the max to assume Latinas can't make it in America, and I don't believe it for a second, as many sure seem hardworking to me and generally not looking for condescending handout. Well, maybe some of them are. Affirmative action welfare has done little good for black people and has either set them up for failure or trapped them in waist-deep in the cesspool of government dependence while destroying black families. Is Digital Nest going to give the money back if their candidates don't find long-term employment? I like the idea of high-tech jobs in Santa Cruz since leisure, hospitality, and nonprofits pay about the worst of any industry. But what assurances are there, even if these people are successful, that these beneficiaries are going to work here long-term since you are going to use some local money? This program is not available solely on a merit and financial need-based system because of, I think, if I read it right, because of leftist BS ideology. We have one more sentence. I sure didn't get a meager scholarship to go to UC because I was a white boy. I'm pretty sure it was because I graduated in the top 1%. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who's with us who wishes to make comment on the consent agenda? Anyone online? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
I'm happy to move the consent agenda.
Ms. O'Hara moves the consent agenda? Have a second?
I'll say second by Mr. Newsom. Debate or discussion on the item? I'll make one very brief comment on item number 23, and that is, in some way, shape, or form, if the, if we adopt this timber harvest policy, which I suspect we are going to do and should, that any timber harvest plan that is being proposed by the city should at a minimum be placed on some kind of communication agenda for the city council so that we would have an opportunity to at least look at it before the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection issues a timber harvest permit within our watershed. A clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on item 18, Councilmember O'Hara. We sure request that this be carried over.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This, this will be brief because I'm very much in support of this, this agenda item. But I did want to reflect on an opportunity that I had to engage with Director Elliott, the city manager, and then tangentially Director Butler on this item. As we think about supporting the museum, who is putting a tremendous investment into city infrastructure, into our park space, I wanted to first express a tremendous amount of appreciation for that. I don't know if we have another nonprofit in town that is, you know, moving in such a strong direction and supporting our, our local infrastructure. So I'm very much in support of this. A question did arise as I was working through the agenda item, which is the discretionary potential that we have to approve these kind of waivers sometimes, not approve these waivers sometimes, and the potential for some clarity on behalf of the council to provide some criteria for when we do approve these types of waivers. And so I would like to do a substitute motion to the staff recommendation that hopefully the city clerk will bring up on the screen for folks. that hopefully the city clerk will bring up on the screen for folks.
Are you doing it right now?
Oh, yeah. Oh, is that okay?
Before public comment? Did we do public comment on this already or no?
No.
Okay.
Put it up. Let's hear what you have to say about it. We'll get everybody's participation.
Maybe, perfect. So the first part of the motion is just to provide some specificity, sorry, folks, on the amount that we are waiving. It's slightly different than the motion language in the agenda report. So waive land use application fees charged through the city planning department in the amount of $17,140, and waive associated building permit fees at the not-to-exceed amount of $120,000 for this Santa Cruz Museum of Natural History project. And then the second motion is to direct staff to develop a council policy or applicable an ordinance that allows for the waiver or reduction of application and permit fees for third-party partners investing in improvements to city-owned infrastructure. This policy should be consistent with state legislation and support projects that provide a clear public benefit. Staff should return within four months with a proposed framework that ensures transparency, equity, and alignment with the city's strategic goals.
Are you looking for a second?
No, there is not, no, we're not making a motion yet.
Oh.
You finished on opening here?
Oh, yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, on your motion. On your motion.
Thank you.
On your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to, sorry, Mayor, I'm a little distracted. Is there a point of order?
I'm calling a point of order. I'm just confused about your, you pulled this item to comment or to raise this additional motion language, but we haven't gone out to public comment yet. And so you're simply stating why you pulled it? And then wouldn't we go to public comment and then come back to?
Okay, I understand your, I understand your point of order. And we will get everyone's participation, as I indicated earlier, before we take a vote. On your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to engage with Director Elliott and tangentially with Director Butler, as well as had a conversation with the city manager. And I do believe that this would provide the council with an opportunity to provide clear, objective criteria on when we do these types of waivers. And I don't know if the Parks and Rec Director or the city manager want to provide any additional context for the city council.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. As Councilmember O'Hara had mentioned, we've had a number of conversations around this over the course of the last week or so. These opportunities don't come to the council that often. And we were eager to bring this one forward in light of the significant investment that the Museum of Natural History is bringing forward relative to this very exciting project and improvements to the building and the surrounding grounds. But it has revealed a need to have a policy going forward that could help guide and inform those decisions for the council when future opportunities arise. So we welcome that feedback, and we'd be happy to work on such a policy and bring it forward to the council at a future date.
Nothing else for me, thank you.
Anyone with us today wish to comment on this item? Anyone with us wish to comment on the item? Seeing and hearing none? Let's get going here. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hello, I'm Felicia Van Stolk. I'm the Executive Director at the Museum of Natural History, and I just want to thank you all for considering this motion. And I fully support the amendment to add a policy. I think as we have been going through this process, finding a need for a policy and a clear pathway forward so that we can be sure to have all the due diligence and follow all of the rules as they should be. And I just want to, again, reiterate my thanks to our partners working with Mr. Heffiger and Tony Elliott to make sure that we are doing our due diligence appropriately. And this would be a really significant, significant symbolically as well from the city to support, again, in honor of our investments, a $20 million approximate project budget to improve a historic building that's over 100 years old and add an extension that will be a community resource. So thank you again for your consideration.
Anyone else on this item? Anyone online? Matters back before the body? Further debate or discussion? Comment?
Thank you. My comment was basically that this is a wonderful partnership. The Museum of Natural History has been a longtime partner with the city and steward of the city Tyrell Park and the surrounding area. And the investment is going to have long-term public benefit. And it's been wonderful to see the progress in this project and the ability to offer to our community all ages, youth to seniors, through the programs and the activities that are done. I just think this is a wonderful way for the city to partner and to invest in a way that we can. I did also have conversations regarding the process of fee waivers. And my direction was a little more internal rather than a formal motion. But just thinking that it would be a good idea going forward, since it doesn't come up often, that we create an equitable process for this type of, for fee waivers, the same way we did a couple of years ago when I was mayor on public events, sponsorships, and grants. Just so there's more transparency in that process and how the city invests in public benefits. So, thank you.
For the questions, comments, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
This is for the substitute, yes. Aye, thank you.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We're on item 24. This is second reading, final adoption of an ordinance relating to sidewalk bending and certain administrative amendments. No presentation on this. Any member have a question or comment on this? We received our information on this two weeks ago. Seeing and hearing none? Anyone with us in chambers wish to comment on the item? Anyone online? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body? Councilmember Golda moves. The Vice Mayor seconds approval of second reading and final adoption. Is there debate or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We're on item 25. This is a resolution of intention to form an enhanced infrastructure financing district and various other actions related to that.
I will return for item 27.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. The item before-
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. The item before you today is the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. And just having a brief presentation outline, Cosmont Companies will be here. Joe Deagus will be here shortly. And working their way over to the council chambers now. But briefly today, we're going to provide some background on the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. We're going to talk a bit about the boundary map and analysis and the fiscal impact analysis, some overall key takeaways, and then next steps. The item before you today is just the initial first step. It's the, if you move forward today, it's the resolution of intention for us to really study and go through the process of creating an infrastructure financing plan. Also today, if you approve, would be to establish the three public members of the city council that will serve on the Public Financing Authority, which is the legal entity that would oversee the district. And it is comprised of three members of the city council and two members of the public. Today, we're not asking you to appoint the members of the public, but we are asking for direction on the process. Similar to other processes we have for commissions, you know, we would have an application process. We can bring that back to you at a future council meeting for you to appoint the additional two public members. But the overview today specifically is to go into the rationale for what we're proposing around establishing an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, what goes into all the details. Joining me shortly is Joe Deagus, and he's with Cosmont Companies. And I will say, it's been a pleasure to work with Joe and to work with Cosmont in general. Of all of the responses that we had in looking at Cosmont's experience, I mean, there, I would say, the vast majority of districts, financing districts under the new EIFD legislation are being led by Cosmont. And you'll, I hear him coming in, which is great. So you will soon just hear the level of expertise they have. I really feel like we're in good hands as we're looking at the formation of the district. And we recently had a webinar, a community webinar about the district and had some really good engagement with the community. So really happy to have Joe here today. And I'll also just mention that Brian Berguno is also in our Department of Staff member, and we're both available after Joe's presentation to help with any questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Joe.
Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Joe, again from Cosmont. So we're privileged to be working for you for about 18 months now, since we responded to the city's request for proposals for this work. And so at the city's direction, we've been looking at a specific type of funding and financing tool, the so-called Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD. And it's a funding and financing tool all about infrastructure. So it's a limited set of improvements, and it's a way to do so without increasing taxes. So what we have found through our analysis is that there are a particular set of circumstances, a financing district boundary, certain revenue allocation levels, that do support feasibility for this tool. And I'll go through some of that in some detail. And very importantly, the item for consideration today sets none of that in stone. It is an initial indication of interest to continue down the path. And then if it did go forward after today, that path includes outreach, additional analysis, and then more public hearings and presentations where approval would be required, both by the city council and a new legal entity that gets arranged. I'm still catching my breath. So the very first thing I'll say, and I might even repeat it, is that this tool is not a new tax. It's very important to understand, it is not a new tax. The way these tools work, a specific boundary is defined, and I'll show a map. It's the one that we've looked at, is about 5% of the city's total acreage. And it's just within that boundary, the assessed property value is frozen, this line on the bottom. And this tool, this tax increment financing tool, if it feels familiar, it was around for about 75 years until redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2012. But the idea is, as the value grows within this specific boundary, above the baseline of today's value, the city is able to take some piece, not all, some piece of its share of the property tax dollar and relegate it in a special fund. And that fund would be specified, restricted, or infrastructure dollars. And so it's for a temporary amount of time until the district is dissolved. And very importantly, different from the old redevelopment agencies, it's just the city's share that is being apportioned. And the key use of this tool is that you're not just taking a piece of dollars that would go to the general fund anyway, but it's about using those dollars to invest in improvements that actually catalyze a level of growth that grow the pie with a positive return on the general fund. That is a key term here that I may reiterate. So some key fundamentals that are important, these are long-term districts. It can be up to 45 years from the district's first bond issuance. These districts don't have to issue debt, but many will. And the maximum lifetime can be shorter, it's just the maximum is 45 years. A new legal entity is arranged, the Public Financing Authority. Its job is to manage this district and govern its activities going forward. But it has to do so according to what I would call a business plan, an infrastructure financing plan, or IFP. And that plan has all the details. The boundary, what are you going to pay for? How much money? What's the impact on my general fund? And that plan has to be previewed very publicly over a series of public meetings and hearings and approved at multiple levels, which I'll walk through before the tool can be implemented. And at the end of this public meeting and hearing process, there's actually no vote because there's no addition of a new tax, but there is a protest opportunity for landowners and property owners, or landowners and residents within the district that is ultimately drawn. So there's a long list of 20 bullet points in the law of what you can pay for. Broadly, it's infrastructure and affordable housing. And that list starts with the words including, but not limited to, and identifies many of the things on this page and more. But again, we're broadly talking about infrastructure and affordable housing. It's a more defined, prescribed definition compared to what the old redevelopment agencies can fund. In our experience, cities and counties that do go down this path, it's for two primary reasons, return on investment and attracting other money. Return on investment, first and foremost, it's a general fund, net impact. You're not just tying up money for no reason because unrestricted property tax dollars are essential for keeping a city's budget balanced or a county budget balanced. And so there has to be a positive return for a public agency to go down this path. And a lot of that goes to what is ultimately invested into by this tool. Can it catalyze a faster or more intense level of investment that brings with it a positive return? And that positive return has to be net of whatever is being shaved off here to the district and net of increased service expenditures to provide services to a potentially new-built-out area. So it's got to be a net-net positive, or else we'd say cities and counties should just not go down this path. And that's in addition to jobs, housing, just solving deficient infrastructure, other measures of return on investment. And then the second point about attracting other money, these tools are explicitly incorporated into several grant scoring rubrics. It started with State Housing and Community Development, or HCD, where you're literally getting more points on your grant application if you're a city or a county that has one of these things in place. And that's what we call just kind of creating, turning yourself into a magnet for other public dollars. About 31 of these things formed up and down the state. Won't go into it here, but all variations, cities, counties, cities and counties working together, coastal versus inland, types of infrastructure vary so highly. And large cities and small cities, the idea is to customize the funding plan to what the local community wants to see. The area in question, again, none of this is set in stone, but we looked at lots of different boundaries for this type of tool. Current proposal is about 540 acres, about 5% of the city in terms of acreage. And it's all about focusing on areas of growth. Again, there's this balance of funding capacity for this tool without too much of encumbrance on the general fund. So these are supposed to be focused on areas of growth so that everything that's not in a color here, we're not touching those property tax dollars at all. Let it flow and encumber to the general fund to keep the city solvent and successful over the long term and focus on the areas of growth. And there was a lot of collaboration with staff on what's in the pipeline, where's the zoning in place for some higher intensity development and draw the map around that. Very importantly, it's not that the things that you pay for are restricted within this boundary. You can pay for things outside of the financing district boundary. The boundaries are more about where's the assessed value growth that you're seeking to capture. So throughout our discussions to date, mostly with staff, in just our webinar, we've been talking about what ought to be on the list for Santa Cruz. And again, far from set in stone, even after today's action, if it were taken, things that have come up, affordable housing multiple times, just the infrastructure to support various forms of housing, whether it's water, sewer, roads, electricity, all these sorts of things on the list. It's not just downtown, it's other of these corridors within the city where the general plan and housing element call for that growth. Library, recreational entertainment, infrastructure and facilities, the infrastructure to support recreational entertainment facilities, Riverwalk, roadway, sidewalk. And the list goes on, and this is just what has come up thus far, none of this being set in stone. In our experience, the public process that comes after today, a lot of that is on this. What do you want to pay for? So just to at least touch on some of the dollars- So just to at least touch on some of the dollars, none of the decisions on what the specific allocation is going to be, none of that is being decided today. We looked at multiple scenarios. How much of the future piece? We're not touching any of today's property tax dollars, just some piece of the growth after today. And scenarios we've looked at range from essentially a quarter of that growth to three-quarters of that growth, 25 to 70%. And order of magnitude, within 10 years, we're seeing that funding capacity range from about $16 to $50 million. All of that is based on what actually happens, what goes vertical. We call these sort of performance-based tools. If, let's say, private sector development community does what it says it's going to do, that creates more funding capacity. If development lags expectations, then the funding capacity through this tool lags. What's ultimately generated is based solely on what actually comes out of the ground and gets assessed. So back to that ROI point, we have gone down that path so far. Our draft analysis looks at how much housing, how much of that is affordable, significant amount, job creation, wages, all good, large numbers. It's what we need to see. But to be honest, where we spend most of our time is just dollars and cents. Can the city not only afford this? What is the return for a city as a public agency going down this path? And that has led a lot to how this boundary was drawn and how those revenue allocations were selected. And so we're seeing, fortunately, significantly positive in these sort of draft terms, boundary and this range of revenue allocation scenarios on a net-net basis for the general fund and other tax entities benefit as well, whether it's metropolitan transit or Santa Cruz Public Libraries and others. And then all of the numbers we're talking about are just this tax revenue stream. It's not considering what else can be brought in from third-party sources, which again is a huge appeal. It's a huge reason for potentially going down this path. State grants as an example. And so just reiterating the point, why do it if you're not better off? Part of our analysis looks at sensitivities. What kind of growth happens if you do do this? If you do invest in the infrastructure? But also, what happens if you don't? And we can't stand up here in public and make estimations that nothing happens if you don't do this tool. It's not defensible. We couldn't stand behind that. But we look at, you know, in the no-district scenario, something will happen. It just may not be as intense or as dense or as fast in terms of that development. And so that return with the darker blue line, still positive, good. We're just saying it can be better if there is a deliberate investment in the infrastructure and catalyze a more intense, faster level of growth. The green's not better than the blue, don't do it. So there's a whole process here. And I wasn't going to go through it line by line, but we want this to be made or available to the public. There's a, we're at, you know, letter C. And there's processes D through I, which are quite public in nature as prescribed by the law. And it's about first drafting that business plan in D, which leaves no room to hide. What are you going to pay for? Dollars, all this stuff. And then you're walking through that in a very public setting in letters E, F, G, H, I, where you're inviting folks to comment on it, object to it if they have objections. And that last letter I, again, it's an opportunity to protest. Folks don't have to mail in a ballot that says yes, but they have an opportunity to say no verbally or in writing that we don't like it. We don't like the tool. We don't like the plan. We don't like the consultant. They can object to anything and put a hold on this thing from getting formed. And that's the purpose of the protest. So just the key terms we like to highlight, it's not a new tax. The revenue comes only from new development actually happening and the increase of assessed property values. There's a restriction here based on the law. It's about public improvements and community amenities. It's more restricted compared to the old redevelopment agencies. And the process is required to be transparent and very public. And so for tonight, it's about answering questions. It's the first time some folks may have heard about this. This non-binding action is ultimately what's on the agenda. Council has some flexibility about how far it goes into appointing the members of the governing body, the Public Financing Authority. That entity is, again, is a hybrid entity that contains at least three members, or it has to be three members of the city council and two members of the public appointed by the council. And then the next step, if it does continue, is drafting of that business plan for public consideration. So I'm going to pass it back to Bonnie here, and then I'll obviously stick around to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the item before you today, and I know we'll have a discussion and questions, but just to put the staff recommendation up, is to adopt a resolution declaring the intention to establish the EIFD and establishing the EIFD Public Financing Authority. Also before you today is the appointment of three members of the city council to the Public Financing Authority Board. And appoint one member of the city council as alternate board member. You don't have to do that today, the alternate board member. If you want to have that at a future council meeting, we will need to come back anyway to have you appoint the two members of the public to the committee. So that's your choice if you're ready to do that today. And then also to authorize the city manager, designated to execute a contract amendment with Cosmont, to take us through this next phase, the amount of $53,000, under $54,000, so to add on to our current contract so that that combined contract doesn't exceed $150,000. And then finally, to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year budget to appropriate funds in the amount of $54,000 for the implementation of this next phase. So those are the items before you today. And I'm happy now to answer any questions that you have. And I'll imagine they're for Joe, so I'll go ahead and sit down.
Thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions from members. Vice mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I've had plenty of opportunity to ask questions, but just a couple of questions. I'm not recalling, how do the property owners and landowners get notified? What's that process? How do they know to oppose if they want to oppose?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Mailing notices, newspaper notices, website notices, and then the meetings and hearings. Those are the primary ones. What staff has done, so that's the letter of the law. Staff has done is a little bit beyond that, which is the promotion of like the introductory webinar a couple of weeks ago and things like that. So all of those sorts of notices are required to be done and repeated throughout the process.
Great. Just one other question. The, we did one webinar. What were some of the kind of common questions or concerns that came up at the webinar? Not all of them, just kind of like, you know, the top few that came up.
Thank you. So I'll start, and then perhaps Bonnie can add to it. We always get at first just a misconception that it is a new tax. And so the reason why I try to proactively address that. So making that clear first and foremost. And then it's usually about, what are you going to do with the money? Whether it's entertainment-related or other things. Parks has come up a good amount of times. And a lot of the input we're just seeing is, would love to see this type of thing on the list. The noticing, how do I learn more? Or do I get more information? That comes up several times, which is great because we want to share all that. And then questions about voting, we get that too.
Oh, what?
Voting. Is there voter approval to form this thing? Is there voter approval to issue debt in the future? Which there's not because it is not a new tax. But those are the typical forms of questions.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember O'Hara.
I would just add one thing from the webinar is that, and it is a requirement of state law, we will be putting up a specific webpage for the EIFD, and the webinar will be posted on that webpage. So all of the questions, our responses and the entire presentation will be available to the public.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to go down a rabbit hole of misinformation over the weekend. So I had a, you know, a good opportunity to engage with Director Lipscomb on this. And I thought I'd share a couple of things that I learned in our conversation. So one of the questions that came up in my mind that feel free to provide some context on this is we can't move forward with a EIFD if we have any obligations with our previous redevelopment agency or the successor agency. And so can you confirm that all of the requirements of our redevelopment agency and successor agency have been met? Because apparently, we can't move forward with an EIFD if they have not been met.
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, three primary prerequisites. One, having achieved what's known as the finding of completion from the Department of Finance, which the city has in November of 2013. The second is the city's compliance with the feedback from State Controller's Office on the so-called due diligence reviews or asset transfer reviews, also related to redevelopment wind down. I do believe the city complied in 2014. And then the third is that the city cannot have any outstanding litigation with the state of California regarding any assets of the successor agency, which the city does not based on our review. Very importantly, what's not a prerequisite is having fully wound down your successor agency. I believe yours still is in existence. Most of the 31 or so of these financing districts that have formed do have still a successor agency with outstanding obligations. There are just some specific parameters that surround that. Two primarily, first, those outstanding obligations are first priority. And the obligations of this financing district are subordinate to those obligations of the former redevelopment agencies. And second, there's just a different cash flow waterfall from, as it relates to property tax revenues from the specific parcels that are within the formal RDA. So we'd say it's not a deal killer. It's just very important parameters that need to be followed or you have that overlap.
Just to conclude on the redevelopment agency, we have concluded the redevelopment agency. We do have, still have the successor agency. And as Joe mentioned, we have what's called a ROPS, a Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule. And there's a few pieces of outstanding debt. The majority, most of them have been settled. And by 2033, we should be completely done with any outstanding debt related to the redevelopment agency. The majority of that debt is related to an affordable housing project on Shafer Road and 1010 Pacific. So it's related to a tax-sharing agreement related to those projects as the outstanding debt. And I will say, we haven't had to transfer any of the redevelopment agency assets. They are transferred now and are held by the city, and we are compliant with the state on all property.
Thank you. Thank you. That's incredibly helpful. And then Joe already touched upon this, but in my research over the weekend, I couldn't find any literature that a voter, a vote of the electorate was not required. And so I'd just like to make sure that we clarify today that indeed, a vote of the electorate is not required to issue bonds.
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, it's confusing because when the law was established in 2014, there was a 55% vote. And then in 2019, there was a bill, Assembly Bill 116, which said, you no longer have to do this vote to issue bonds, but you do have to do this prolonged public meeting and hearing process with a protest opportunity in its place. So today, no vote required to form or to issue debt, but there is that hearing and protest opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Let me make sure. I'm a big fan of redevelopment. I liked it a lot.
Me too.
I thought it was a, I thought it was a huge political mistake. Governor Brown had a multi-billion-dollar state budget deficit. He decided that one of the ways to solve that was to sweep five, six, seven billion dollars off the table of redevelopment funds and throw it into the general fund to try to balance the state's budget. And in the process, eliminating redevelopment, whether it was good, bad, or indifferent. And I think where you stand depends on where you sit. When the governor was the mayor of Oakland, he liked it a lot. When he was the governor and had a general fund problem, he didn't like it a lot. So where you stand depends on where you sit. I like this, I like tax increment financing a lot for a couple of reasons. One is it is a way to make capital improvements that are targeted. And the beneficiaries of that pay for it over time, whether they're on day one, or that they're on year 10, or they're on year 20. They are the beneficiaries of those capital outlay projects. And so they are all paying during the useful life of that project. I think that's very sound public agency budgeting. I think the other good piece of it is that you are essentially borrowing today and paying it back with cheaper dollars going forward. I think that's a benefit of tax increment financing as well. I do think, when thinking this through though, that there is the following issue that's worth thinking about. And again, I like this. I've thought about it a little bit, and I like it over the years. But it is pre-budgeting. What you are doing is you're saying this tax increment for the next X number of years during the debt retirement is not available to our successors in interest to be able to make discretionary decisions budget year to budget year. So it is pre-budgeting. And I think in that regard, it should be very, very careful when we do it. Because our successors and interests are not going to be amused if they don't have as much general fund money to hire another police officer or do whatever it is they want to do. So we are pre-budgeting here. But I think that the context in which we're doing it is in pursuit of a very well-established set of public policies that have to do, whether it's our downtown expansion plan, our general plan, our zoning ordinance, or what we're doing on affordable housing, what we're doing trying to stimulate economic development and so on. That is all, that's not an abstraction. Those are very well-established by us. And in order to make that happen, it seems to me, we have less tools available to us than we've had in the past. But this light form of redevelopment tax increment financing is one of the resources we have available. I think it's quite good. And the rest of this process to get ourselves where we can actually issue debt fills in all the spaces about what exactly are we planning on doing. It's not, give me some money and then let's figure out what to do. This is, if you want to use this, say yes to us, and then we will return with specific project allocations we would hope would fit into the budget of this entity. So I think this is quite good. I'm very happy that you're bringing it forward. Cosmont, thank you for your analytical presentation to us. It's very helpful. Let me see if there is anyone with us who wishes to comment on this item. Anybody in the public wish to comment on the item? We have anybody online? We'll take the person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Yes, hello. Hey, my internet's working now. It's carried. You know, this is, this item attempts to authorize, without a vote of the people, both a permanent forever set aside of undefined incremental property tax revenues to dedicate to service debt leverage financing for projects in a newly-defined district somewhat bigger than downtown district. Never mind debt interest is wasted money you could burn in a bonfire on the beach to fund whatever you want. Laundry list included here that has no specifics. You know, as far as what the mayor said about, you know, everybody in the district benefits and pays, you know, you've got a ever-increasing amount of tax-exempt properties in this district, and they're not paying. And so when you do something to take away money from, say, property taxes and allocate it in this way, then, you know, who's paying for the regular, you know, services that will increase in price every year because of inflation? And to me, it'll just end up being you run out of money again for normal services and so forth. Anyway, governments all over, including the federal one, have proven they cannot be trusted borrowing money to the point of no return, financial ruin, which the U.S. is pretty close to. Sure, it's possible to borrow money producing a long-term investment that really pays off in economic growth and greater prosperity. The private sector does it all the time and sometimes they get rich and sometimes they go bankrupt, having taken that risk, but they don't risk much of anybody else's money except the banks. My question, siphoning off incremental tax, property tax money for projects unrelated to the normal general fund services since, as I said, inflation eats most of the yearly increase. New stuff requires new money really and classic bond measures with specific projects can be approved by voters, but you don't like getting any one bit getting public approval for anything. Hence, this is what I would call a public workaround or debt slavery, take your pick. Debt is serviced over a period of years, rendering the incremental tax increase a pace for it unavailable for servicing normal service cost increases for the debt term. And the debt would grow then geometrically. You have, for instance, done a great many subsidized socialist price control housing projects, or you have yet to do the math to prove they are worth the money, even assuming the public wants to pay for other people's housing, which for me, I don't. Therefore, I think specifically those uses for money should be excluded, especially because they don't pay taxes, property taxes. Other things that might be excluded are these housing supportive infrastructure ideas that are really not that our infrastructure is wearing out, but their capacity increases for ever more housing and you could use it instead to do the CIP backlog and plant resilience. I just think is, you know, a whole other subject. All of these have problems related to who pays and who benefits. It's a good darn thing I don't live in this proposed district, which is a lot larger. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online? No. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation number one, adopt a resolution declaring intention to establish the Santa Cruz Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and establishing the Santa Cruz EIFD Public Financing Authority. Accept staff recommendation number three, authorize the manager doesn't need to execute a contract amendment with Cosmont and Associates in an amount not to exceed $53,154 with total amount not to exceed $150,000 for supporting the implementation phase of the FID. And number, staff recommendation number four, adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 budget to appropriate funds in the amount of $54,000 for the implementation phase of the EIFD. And in relation to staff recommendation number two, appointing three members of the city council to the public financing board in an alternative, I'd like to make a motion to for that to be, for those three members to be the mayor, the vice mayor, and the representative of the district that will have the majority of funds collected by the FID as the three members and then the alternate being the representative of the district that will have the second most funds collected by the FID.
Motion, second. Is there a second? Vice Mayor's second. Mr. Newsom, you may open on your motion.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Director Lipscomb and Cosmont for the presentation. I think this proposed enhanced infrastructure financing district provides a great tool or vehicle the city can use to capture and then set aside part of the revenue generated from increasing property values and new development in certain parts of our community and then using that funding to invest in targeted infrastructure improvements in our community. And as the mayor says, the beneficiaries of this investment pay for it. So I support the creation of this EIFD and with moving forward with this recommendation. And in relation to the members of the public financing agency, the mayor represents the city at large, the vice mayor can have those functions as well from time to time. And I think the representative of the district that will have the most funds collected by this EIFD and most likely have the most funds invested into it by this EIFD should form the public financing authority and then the alternate should be the representative that will have the second most. And just for my colleagues and for more information for my colleagues, Ms. Lipscomb, I would assume just looking through this that most likely a majority of the funds will be collected from downtown in this south of Laurel area for this as well. Okay. So just for more information for my colleagues. Thank you.
Further debate or discussion? Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to provide some comment on this. In your calculus, who would be the second, who would be the alternate in that case?
Who? We don't know yet.
I see.
Yeah, we'll have to run an analysis because we have projected assessment based on development in the pipeline. And so we'd have to look at where that falls by district. We just haven't done that analysis. So we can do that and potentially, you know, bring that back at the same time that we bring for the applications for your consideration for the public members.
Okay, that's helpful. Just as an observation, one of the questions that I had about that future, I didn't characterize it in the way that our previous county treasurer characterized it, but that, that the impacts to the general fund and that kind of look at what would be the missed opportunity with moving forward with this district, that did come up in my mind in terms of that future budgeting that the mayor described. I will say, if we are thinking about this as a point in time right now, of course, the revenue would be mostly in our current pipeline, what we're seeing downtown. But if this is a 45-year project, who knows, right? So given the geographical boundaries, I would, I would ask the council to be a little bit more thoughtful about diversifying who's on the board. I would imagine we can change who's on the board year by year. I'm actually not sure about that. And ensure that council members in districts like myself, Harvey West, like mid-county, I'm sorry, mid-city or mid, you know, council member Brunner's district have an opportunity because there will be a significant amount of development over the next couple generations. So that would be my one comment is that I am also interested in participating in this. I understand the maker of the motion, your theory around this, but I just don't want to be short-sighted because right now we're in a very specific time where there's a ton of development going on downtown. But this is a very long-range financing district and I want to make sure that council members outside of those districts have an opportunity to weigh in as well, particularly around what we invest in, right? Because the whole point of this is not just to invest in the areas that we are seeing the development, but have an opportunity to invest across the city. And so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity as a full council to have that conversation.
Further debate or discussion? Clerk will call roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunner has recused herself. Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentory Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. In order to go forward, we're going to go backwards. We are going to return to item number seven on our agenda today. This is the delegation is going to Shingu, our, one of our sister cities of our fine city. And we have a whole bunch of folks here to send off and wish them the very best. And I would like to acknowledge Linda Snook, who is the acting chair of the Shingu Subcommittee. If you'd be kind enough to come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Keely. I'd like to introduce Carolyn Barton, who is the chair of the Sister Cities Committee.
On behalf of the Sister Cities Committee, I want to thank all of you so very much for supporting this fine program. The opportunity to go to Shingu, to experience Japan will enhance their lives always and certainly enriches the life of our city. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I am very happy to present to you all today 15 fine students who we have chosen to represent the city of Santa Cruz youth in our sister city of Shingu, Japan. And they'll be participating in cultural education programs and they will be meeting with Mayor Taoka. And I'm quite certain that they will make you all very proud. They represent five different Santa Cruz public schools today and thank you for supporting them. And I'd just like to read their names and have them walk across. Mateo Quintejo Cervantes Brewer, Samantha Herrera, Aloma Doria, Nolan Gallant, Milo Gallant, Leif MacArthur, Lars Branson, Kai Basaza, Jarah Holmes, Hannah Steiner, Asia Sarman, Imuna Minami, Avery Parker, Addison Kimble, Mateo Torres. Thank you all.
Come here, come here, come here, come here, back, back over here. We've been waiting all day to see these folks. So only tell us a little more about what's going to happen. Tell us about this trip. Tell us what they're going to be doing or one of you come tell us what's going to be going on.
Do I have a spokesperson from the high schools?
Anybody will do. Sure. And your name is?
My name's Leif MacArthur.
Hi, Leif. Good. Tell us about it.
So we will be traveling to Shingu, Japan, and we'll be staying with the host family. And we'll get to like see what living in Japan is like. And we'll get to experience some awesome things and have a great time.
Leif, how, Leif, how long will you be there?
A week.
A week. And you each stay with a different family? Everybody's staying with a different family? Is that how that works?
I think we have like a buddy that we stay with. And then also in the summer, people from, students from Japan are going to travel to California and to Santa Cruz and stay with our families.
And we've seen them before. They're so wonderful. And so a day will be, now will you be going to school? Will you be seeing cultural events? All those things? Tell us a little bit more about it.
I think we'll get a mix of like a lot of the culture, just probably the daily life. And we'll get to know more about it.
Japanese food.
Making Japanese food.
Making.
Hiking.
Sing shrines.
Sing shrines.
World Heritage, UNESCO World Heritage Sites that exist.
I like the English, the English translation. Leif, listen, thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us. We're so happy for all of you, proud that you'll be carrying the Santa Cruz city flag. We wish you the very best. Have a wonderful trip. And when you come back, will you write us a little note? Let us know how it all went?
Great idea. Thank you, Mayor. And in the fall, there will be a committee member organizing, hopefully mayoral delegation to Shingu. And that's probably coming up in October. We're just starting to organize it now. So of course, you're all highly encouraged and invited to come. Thank you.
Yeah. What we want to do, we're going to, we're going to stretch this out for one more minute. I want all of you to come into the center in front here because a couple of our folks, council member, want to take a picture with you. So come on, get, get, get right in front of the podium. Right over there. Come on, council members. Wonderful people. You've been having a picture before?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Yeah. Thank you for all of you.
Let's get a couple people in the front row. Let's get two rows. Two rows. Two rows, everybody. Watch. Take a look.
All right. You say Shingu. That works too. All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
On three, one, Shingu.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll sign Josie Crossy while I'm at the high school again.
You really do that, just like throw some of these.
You were married?
Right before.
I couldn't make it work. I was booked for two weddings. I was writing between both weddings, so I'd have to cut it short and traveling.
So much.
And then go away and go away. No travel.
And then when.
Are you going to have to join the next one?
Yeah.
Oh, you're still refused.
Oh, that's why. You're going back for it.
Yeah.
We definitely.
Lost the quorum.
Oh, that was good. We're good now.
What did he say? Scared everybody away. I'm just.
That was so funny.
That was fun. They're so sweet.
Lucky kids.
That was fun.
It costs a lot.
Does it?
Oh, yeah. It's like over a trillion.
Including the quorum or not?
I don't think so. Not going to say.
That's why they're not interested.
Ten star?
Ten star. Because they're different.
Two, three, four, five. Ms. Bush, we've got, we got a, we got a quorum here. We're going to get going. Ms. Bush, we good to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay. Council's in session. We have a quorum. We are on item number 26. This is the Santa Cruz Community Farmer Market, Farmers Market, excuse me, interim location and initial direction for future concept plans and many other words in this sentence. Ms. Lipscomb, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Here before you today, this has been many years in the process of getting here. We've been working closely since 2016, but really even before that with the farmers market and looking at interim locations in the downtown once we knew we were moving forward with the downtown library affordable housing project. So first we focused on Lot 7. More recently, we've been focused on the, a lot adjacent to the existing library site. And I have the presentation up. Great. So today, we're going to briefly talk about the overall project parameters. We're going to first talk about the interim market, Lot 16 concept, and Lot 16 is a parking lot adjacent to the library. Then we're going to go into the permanent mixed-use concepts for the site once the new library is built on Lot 4 and we're able to relocate the library into that site. And then finally, we'll conclude with next steps. So just by way of background, we had in 2021 at council direction, a complete community visioning process. And we partnered with Project for Public Spaces and Group Four to do a community outreach process where they had numerous, as you can see in some of the photos, sort of public input on what would our community really want to see if, once we're ready to reuse the existing library site. Feedback from this process, which we did present to council in 2021, and that report is available on the city website under the downtown library affordable housing project. But specifically, the feedback was to have a mixed-use sort of civic space in the heart of our downtown that offers a new type of destination, a new attraction. And that's really, actually, it's funny, this is 2021 because now in 2024, this is really all about sort of new retail trends, is bringing those experiences into the downtown. So our community was visionary even, even then. The overall, there was a voting process among the communities, you can see with the dots, but other sort of feedback. And ultimately, there were a few different options that were presented to the community. And the option that included housing, included a mixture of community civic and an opportunity for the farmers market to be on the lot, got the resounding sort of support overall by the community. Some of the feedback included some of the other bullets you see up there, which is just a space for all, is very, very Santa Cruz-centric, age-friendly attractions and opportunities to draw visitors of, you know, all ages and culture to downtown Santa Cruz. And also to have a flexible design that can accommodate programming and activities. So not just designed for one entity, but designed to be very flexible space. So we then came forward to council and ultimately council did endorse the community recommendation. And this is a very conceptual sort of layout of that initial design back in 2021, which includes Pacific Plaza Park, which doubles on farmers market days as a farmers market venue, but includes affordable housing on the site where the library currently is. In 2024, we came forward with council, we were further directed to work with the farmers market board and really refine the overall project elements, specifically including the interim market layout because the farmers market did move forward as their board and basically identified Lot 16 as an interim location. They've yet to say that it's sure the permanent location, but for the interim location for the next three to four years, they're committed to having the market on this lot. And I know we do have a few members of the farmers market board here today. I believe Lynn Robinson is here, Tom Bros. Nace is, I think, traveling to Mexico, but he's hopefully going to be able to call in and we may have a few more board members, but those are the, those are the couple that I saw in the, in the audience earlier. So just to orient you. of that initial design back in twenty twenty-one, which includes Civic Plaza Park, which doubles on farmers market days as a farmers market venue, um, but includes affordable housing, um, on the site where the library currently is. In twenty twenty-four, we came forward with council. We were further directed to work with the farmers market board, um, and really refine the overall project elements, and specifically including the interim market layout, because the farmers market did move forward as their board and, um, uh, basically identified Lot Sixteen as an interim location. They've yet to say that it's, sure, the permanent location, but for the interim location for the next three to four years, they're committed to having the market on this lot. And I know we do have a few, uh, members of the farmers market board here today. I believe Lynn Robinson is here, Tom Bros, um, uh, Nesh, um, is, I think, traveling to Mexico. But he's, uh, hopefully going to be able to call in, and we may have a few more board members. But those are the, those are the couple that I saw in the, in the audience earlier. Um, so just to orient, um, you to where we are, um, this is Lot Sixteen that we're talking about for the interim market. It's roughly a quarter of an acre, um, and it's adjacent to the current library site. Um, the idea for the farmers market is that it would be home to both the winter and summer markets. Um, it's important to say, the existing farmers market, the full summer layout, does not fit on Lot Sixteen. And you'll see that shortly when we actually talk about the layout. So the permanent project parameters, which we'll go into a little more detail later, includes all the city-owned parcels. As you can see, that's a lot of space. Not everyone is aware that we actually own, um, a, a house on the corner of Locust and Cedar Street. So, um, we have that just for planning purposes in the footprint of what we'd be talking about here today. But we're roughly a little under an acre and a half when we look at the entire site. So for Santa Cruz, infill development, that's a really large site. So it's pretty exciting to talk through what's all the potential that we could have here. It's also adjacent to our, our city hall. And so there's a lot of synergy between the existing beautiful city hall campus, um, that we have right, right out here and the adjacent parcel. So we're really excited to, to move forward on the planning for this. So next, I want to talk about, um, the interim market layout. So this is the summer market layout. And this is, um, in progress, I will say, because there's some movement of the little tents, the light blue tent structures are representing farmers market, um, vendors. And, um, so there's some movement, um, between the board, and they're working on layout now. But this is roughly the formation of how the farmers market will be laid out. So you can see on Lot Sixteen, and I'll show a, a close-up, um, here, and then we'll come back. You can see sort of a layout of farmers market, you know, both vendor stalls with the light sort of blue tent canopies. And then the idea is that we would have some supporting infrastructure in the lot. So portable restrooms, um, a stage, which is represented here by the, the yellow on the left, and then you can see it on the right with the little yellow tent covering. Some other sort of food market vendors, a place really for the community and the public to gather on market days to eat and celebrate. The stage would be, um, a really interesting idea that the farmers market's been talking about, um, which is a collaboration both with the library and with Santa Cruz City Schools to have different performances and scheduled performances as part of the farmers market on farmers market days, which is really, really exciting. Um, but back to the layout, and one of the things that, uh, we are working out and still in progress is the actual, as you can see, there's a portion of the market on the street. Um, the farmers market, much beloved in Santa Cruz, it doesn't just fit on that, on that off-street footprint. And so one of the things we are working through are what are the safety pieces that we need to put in place? What are the ballards, the barricades, just to make sure that it's a safe, um, it's a safe place for the pedestrians and the community. Um, we do have one other thing that we are pursuing. It's, um, not, not ready today, but we are in discussions with Crusio and Ecology Action about potentially being able to activate their lot on farmers market days. So we're having initial discussions right now. We'll come back at a later time if we're able to move forward with that. But we're pretty excited by that possibility. So that, um, I'll come back to the, the market later, the interim market. But that's pretty much where we are with the market, um, the interim market layout. Um, there's a lot of interesting discussions, um, about sort of the transition to permanent. And I'll talk about those shortly that involve the farmers market as well. In your packet today and in the recommendation, we are asking to move forward with some infrastructure and supporting infrastructure for the interim market that will, the way we've looked at it is to really, um, be applicable both now for the interim market, which could be up to three to four years, but also that infrastructure would be in place as we transition into permanence. Should the farmers market board determine that, yes, they do want to stay on that site? So we're pretty excited about that. But the other element we're excited about is the potential for activating the site more days than just on farmers market Wednesdays. And our goal in working with the farmers market board is that, um, as we start, our initial focus was, will be just on activating on, on Wednesdays with the farmers market and making sure, you know, they work through how that layout is, how that works. But by putting in that supporting infrastructure, we want to be available for when the farmers market is ready to go into more days per week for activation. And that's really our goal. And then with that, um, we're talking with different, um, organizations, including Event Santa Cruz. There's some other organizations that are interested in looking at ways we can activate, um, the lot on more days per week. So we're looking at a combination of activation. We're also working, um, with our, uh, public works, um, team and department on having some parking on non-market days, non-event days, um, remaining adjacent to the library so that we have some park, public parking available. So we're really sort of analyzing and looking at all, at all angles at this time. Okay, I'm going to, um, go into, um, the next sort of phase or concept study. So this is sort of two parts. That was the interim market. This is looking now at, um, what the market could look like, um, once the library is relocated and we redevelop the site. Um, this is the most dramatic one with, with a lot of housing. This is roughly a hundred and fifty-four units. Um, this does have thirty-one thousand commercial office. One thing I'll show you on, on the next slide is that commercial office is both a combination of city hall offices, since we are currently, um, in various sites all around downtown, um, being able to bring all of the city staff back on campus and sort of this expanded campus. And then, and enabling us to move forward on some efficiencies, um, within the city hall across departments. Um, but it still provides over a half acre open plaza for the farmers market and an additional ten to fifteen thousand of covered ground floor space for the farmers market in addition to the open plaza area. So the open plaza area at point six acre does fully accommodate the full summer market, which is the largest market of the farmers market. With that said, um, this does have majority of the site covered, you know, more by housing. This is not the preferred option, but we did want to explore an option that had sort of maximum housing on site. And as you can see, uh, just looking at the floor plan, uh, in the orange or tan is the farmers market indoor space. As you can see, it's kind of a zigzag shape. And the gray, um, area behind would be the city office. And the idea with the farmers market indoor space is that it opens up with having some open up sort of like glass garage doors almost, that opens up into the plaza area. And we've also been talking about some sort of sale and some other, um, potential retractable sort of awnings and different things that come off of the main structure to provide some more coverage. So a lot still, still, um, to be determined. Okay, concept B. Um, this one has, um, this one is actually the most efficient use of the site. It's a rectangular housing development, which is a double-loaded housing corridor. Um, it's four levels of housing over this initial sort of grand level of farmers market, you know, facing the civic plaza and farmers market. And then the backside facing Locust Street would be the city offices. Um, this one, as you can see from this, um, hand-drawn rendering, it plays really well and connects to the existing city hall plaza across the street and the Black Lives Matter mural in between. Just think it has a really nice sort of flow and synergy. And the idea of having this be truly a civic plaza, community downtown plaza, both available for the farmers market, um, but also available for the community as a community resource right at the heart of our downtown is pretty exciting. Um, I will say on the housing, um, current zoning on this site, um, for just regular housing and any height is roughly thirty-five feet. Um, for affordable housing, you know, you could have an additional thirty-three feet. This is sort of in the middle, sort of splitting that difference. It could go lower, it could go higher. It, that's really not a decision that you need to make today at all. It's more, this is just representational of a number of units that we could have in sight. So I wanted to say that now, because this is not a, a design style, and it's not a, a, a height or determination on density at all. It's really just like, what are the efficient layouts? What are the uses on site? Um, here are the floor plans. Again, you can see that double-loaded corridor I was talking about on the housing in the lower area, and you can see the breakdown. And this one's hatched because, uh, between the flex space, there, you could go either way. You could include more farmers market indoor space depending on how, where they are and how they want to explain, um, expand, or more, um, city hall sort of office space. So it's a pretty flexible layout that way. Option C, and we did this, um, because in working with the farmers market, uh, particularly wanted to see, well, what does it look like if we just did one that didn't have any housing? That was just really looking at and focused on sort of the civic plaza and the farmers market concept? So we went ahead and, 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 and did that. And what you see here that you do have is you get sort of that peaked center, you know, very sort of grand presence of a farmers market building that faces the plaza, which is, which is attractive. The downside is there's no housing. Um, one thing I'll mention, um, that I didn't highlight in the staff report is that because this is a city site, and it's listed in our housing inventory on our housing element, um, we now have to report, um, annually to HCD, um, on this inventory list of opportunity sites. The site is listed as a housing, future housing opportunity site. And there's currently state law, the Surplus Lands Act, which seems to get more rigid every year, um, which requires us to actually make the site available before we enter into any long-term leases or obligations on the site that are multi-year. It's typically beyond, beyond fifteen. And before we do any development on the site, that's other than strictly a government use, we have to put a notice of availability out there to a specified list of affordable housing developers, um, that are signed up through the state housing and community development office. So one way to really stay in control is to do our own affordable housing project, which is one of the reasons we also have housing on site, plus of course, we have such a great need. Um, but I did want to say, um, while we went through this exercise, it's probably not legally feasible for us to go forward without including some level of housing on the site. Um, with that said, it's still, what I like about this one, um, that I think we achieve in the concept B, is that we still get this great public plaza area in both of them. And I think having the housing on site is really gonna help contribute to the act, activation of the farmers market and all the other activities on the non-market days. Um, so finally, I just have a comparison of the three. We can come back to this if you have any questions. Um, and then I just wanted to provide, again, and notice the disclaimer at the bottom. This is just a visual, a visualization for reference only. But this is just to show potential scaling, um, just to show really how large that public plaza really is. You have a sense of, of an acre and a half in our, heart of our downtown, a plaza that's just slightly under an acre. It is a really large area. It's pretty exciting to think about in the context of, of public community events and what we can do there. I have a few just other close-up images. You can see a little bit more, a detail of what it would look like on the farmers market, to have those sort of glass garage doors sort of open and have that food hub concept that the farmers market is really talking about. And I think could really help activate, um, and draw new interest in, in the downtown. Here's just a street level from the pedestrian, what it would feel like, um, to be at the corner of this existing city hall campus, sort of looking towards, um, the potential proposed new project. And then finally, just a close-up. So, um, I think it's important just to really hit home the point that we haven't made any, any, um, sort of decisions or thoughts, or really put any, um, preferences to what the housing could look like. And so here you can see, the housing could come down. It could be shorter. It could be segmented and broken up. It's not, you know, it's not just a, a massive block. It could have taller, if that's the direction council wants to go. And it could be stepped. There could be artic, articulated sort of setbacks. So all of that will be determined much further down the road. Um, but just wanted to have some visualizations for you to see today in the context of the, of the farmers market and the public plaza. So with that said, just in conclusion, the recommendation actions before you today is to adopt a resolution appropriating two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from the Economic Development Trust Fund to fund the site furnishings, um, to activate Lot Sixteen for the farmers market. That includes the public restrooms and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand from our, um, IIG and fill an infrastructure grant that was awarded, um, to, um, our project for the, uh, downtown library affiliated with that project to help fund the infrastructure needed. So some of the trenching, resurfacing of the lot, um, the utilities to support the public restrooms and the stage. Um, so that's what's before you today. And then additionally, if you could give us direction, I, I presented the three options. And if you, um, the stat, the recommendation is for option B, which includes housing and sort of that efficient, um, housing layout and maximizes the plaza and the farmers market layout. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Lipscomb, thank you very much for a very thoughtful and clear presentation. Let me ask if there are questions by members. Councilmember Goldar?
Thank you for all your work on this and the decades of past councils that had the foresight to kind of be visionaries around this redevelopment. I, I love option B. I, I think that's the best possible option. I'm excited. That's the staff recommendation. I think, um, it would provide like continuity of open space right here from the city hall plaza out to, um, the future farmers market site. And I think, and I know this is still not decided, right, offering, that perhaps we don't go with the modern design that we've been going with on all the developments and maybe stick with some like classic architecture and have it kind of tie into the city hall beautiful building and, and extend it that way and maybe do some bricks instead of, instead of cement and just make it look like it was intentional and not just grown up there with the cheapest possible materials. Sorry, modern buildings. Those are my thoughts. I don't know if there was a question. But I was, the question is, do we have any say in the design?
Yeah, I think as a city, as a city-led process, you have absolutely, you know, control over the design.
Further questions or comments? Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I completely agree with Councilmember Goldar. I, my first instinct about this is I really hope the architecture ties into our city hall campus. There, you know, we have the Spanish building. There's, um, you know, the, the library that is a different type of architecture, but it's what we have grown fondly to care about in our community. And I, you know, I really think that's an important bit of feedback. I do have a couple of questions. Um, have we, have we considered use of Lot Fourteen in addition to Lot Sixteen, blown out the wall in between and having access to all of that surface area? Um, and if not, why?
Um, and do you, just to clarify, do you mean just for the interim market?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did look at that. Um, part of it is a, a cost equation. Um, there is a grade change, um, between the two areas. And so we're, we're trying to balance the cost of the interim, um, investments that we're making now and making sure we're not, um, paying for things and going too high in the investment for things that we'll have to undo as part of the permanent, um, farmers market layout and part of the permanent development. The other element is that, um, while the existing library is still in place, they do have their circulation, their drop box. They have some, uh, library staffing vehicles in Lot Sixteen. So it's a combination of partly public, but also library-specific uses. So we didn't want to take that, um, lot completely offline. And then we also have, I should say one final thing. We, we also have, and it's, hasn't been determined yet, but potentially some of those trees in the back are, are, um, another reason we want to wait on that until absolutely necessary.
Okay, thank you. Uh, follow-up question about the bathrooms. Um, the current, to my knowledge, the current farmers market does not furnish bathrooms. Um, what is the thinking about this? My, my question, the context behind the question is, who is responsible for managing, uh, these bathrooms? Um, in particular, um, would they be open, you know, outside of the hours of the farmers market? And then ultimately, what would be the city's responsibility, um, for the bathrooms? And maybe, um, just answering the question about why we decided to, to move forward with bathrooms, when we don't have that with the existing farmers market is my first question.
Yeah, that's really based on feedback we've had from a lot of different event producers and also the farmers market of wanting to, um, have a community resource, a sort of a city resource that's available that has actual real amenities. Um, so having porta-potties is less desirable for a lot of the events, but having these portable restrooms, they come in, we're actually be putting in, we'll go through the permitting process and putting in the utilities, doing the trenching and everything we need so that it has running water, you know, it has, you know, flushable toilet. And they're a little easier to clean and maintain. We would put in our existing agreement, um, with whichever entity, both farmers market and potentially other event producers, that they would, um, manage the restrooms, um, for the time that they're activating the site. I, you know, we won't really know until we, we start the practice, if we need additional cleaning. But the idea is that the restrooms would only be open, um, when the site is being activated and that they would be lockable, um, when the site is not activated.
Thank you. And then one last question. Um, I also see a nexus of an incredible opportunity for this housing, which I agree, I, I agree with Councilmember Goldar. I think option B, um, is the best option. I think having that open plaza that goes directly from city hall over is, um, a wonderful, uh, plan. I wonder if we can think about, um, a process and thinking, uh, thinking about potentially having that house, housing be focused on city employees, um, workforce housing for city employees. It seems like this is a conversation that we're having a lot, we're building a lot of affordable housing. I do think our, there, you know, we have a huge demographic of, of employees that could really benefit from housing, um, downtown. So I just wanted to put that in your, in your ear, to think about if there is an opportunity for us to think about that, um, as we move forward with this process.
Thank you. The vice mayor is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've had the privilege to just recently join the farmers market board, replacing my colleague, Martine Watkins. So I just want to first acknowledge the farmers market board members and Bonnie and your team, because I know this is.
and Bonnie and your team, because I know this is years in the making, and it's really exciting to be part of the conversation here today and to see us move that much closer to what we've been talking about and hearing from the community. I do think option B strikes at that balance of building the very needed housing that we know that we, that we have to, not just meet state requirements, but we know that we need here in our community, but also the open space and a space to gather. I think, you know, this is part of a bigger picture of our downtown activation, and we're rethinking how these spaces can be used, and I think folks want to come to downtown to have an experience, and that's what we're creating here, is an opportunity for an experience. Yes, go get your produce at our, you know, wonderful local, from our local farmers, yes, have a space, but it's really about gathering and community, and I think that we get to it with, with this option. I full-heartedly agree that we have discretion, since this is a city property, in terms of what we want the housing to look like and who we want it for. I do have a motion prepared that includes hopefully some of that when we get to that, prioritizing city employees, seniors and other sub-populations that we know are at greater need, and as much as possible making it low, low income, or affordable housing, workforce housing. What else did I want to say? I think I said what I wanted to say, thank you for the work.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Further on this, I don't, a couple of thoughts, one is, I like option B as well, if we're taking a straw vote here before we take an actual vote, looks to me like, like, that makes good sense. You and I've had this conversation privately, I've had it with, with the city managers as well. Our alleged civic center campus-y thing that we pretend exists here, you know, basically consists of this, the annex, the library, the civic, and my observation of, of the working conditions for our employees at the city is that it's like working on a rabbit warren. When you walk around this building, you walk around the annex, everybody's in very tight spaces, none of this was designed for this level of habitation on a daily basis by a workforce. And I, it is of concern as a, as a city resident for years that, I think all of us travel around in our various assignments as councilmembers and mayors and whatnot, and we see other city halls and we see other public facilities and so on, and I don't know about you, but I come back almost uniformly scratching my head, say, saying, why is the city of Santa Cruz have such substandard office spaces and whatnot for our city workers? So, for me, if, if the highest priority here is the, is the farmer's market, because of other high priorities that make sense to me, that the second highest priority ought to be the working conditions of the employees of our city. And the third priority is fine with me if it's affordable housing, but it's not exactly like, we don't have any ideas on affordable housing around town, we got a lot of them, but we don't have a bunch of ideas about how to get a better set of working conditions for our employees. So, this is probably the one and only opportunity we're going to have in the next 40 years or so to say, well, let's, let's pay serious attention to that. And so, if, if where this goes, look, this is a beginning step of many more steps we're going to go down, but in terms of trying to take the temperature of the council, at least my temperature is, farmer's market first, city employees' workspaces second, affordable housing third. Let me see if there are members of the public who wish to comment on this item before we take an action. And, good afternoon, welcome. Good to see you.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Keely, forget the formalities, hi y'all.
Hi y'all.
I am presently, and initially, president of the board for the Santa Cruz Farmer's Market. We've been operating that market six months after the Loma Prieta earthquake. Day one, and the city does need improvements right now, it's true, but it really did when we started in April 1990, and we were able to bring it back. It was amazing, the farmer's markets basically don't need much, they need some level land, and we just drive up and on we go with the celebration. It turns into a celebration, a community celebration of not only the food, which is very important, but the community being able to celebrate each other, and we have a wonderful, wonderful community. I've been doing the market right here every Wednesday for a very, very long time, 38 years, no, 30, 28 years, 28 years, every, every Wednesday. And my husband just asked me, "Don't you ever get tired of doing the market?" I said, "No, absolutely not." I love it. So, yeah, thank you for saying that the farmer's market is number one priority, that is excellent. So, as I said before, our needs basically aren't much, but we do, and I so appreciate the vision that Bonnie has shared, especially the B concept is fine. But we also have been simmering very exciting plans for the future, related with food, related to the space, being the third space as they talk about, there's work, there's home, and there's a place to socialize. The market does that, but it's only for a few hours. So, what would the market would do is it would initiate people to come down here weekly, to get that set up. And number two, all of a sudden it becomes a, a community spot to meet up, maybe go to the civic, maybe go out to dinner, anyway, it's very important, and Santa Cruz needs this. We need this, you know, we need open space, we need green space, you know, and the space that we're leaving is probably the largest open space in the city, and so, anyway, time's running out on that. So, I, I think green, open space is wonderful, filled with community who are celebrating themselves and good food. That's my, that's my part. And also, I just want to thank Bonnie, who's amazing. Thank you very much.
Let's see if anyone else. Mayor Robinson, come on up, come on. Now, as, as Ms. Robinson's approaching, I'm going to tell people who are watching something you probably don't know, and that is that on the dais, we each have a desk, and in the desk, well, there's some things, but in the desk that the mayor has in the drawer here, everyone who has served as mayor has signed the drawer. So, we have Lynn Robinson as mayor from December 10th, 2013 to December 9th, 2014. Welcome back to the chambers.
Wherein that month, I think I went to Xinhu. I just told Tom, I go, we, we flew in during a, a little bit of a storm, it was kind of fun.
Welcome back.
So, I have to say, I served on so many boards, it was such an incredible privilege my years, from 2006 to 2014, 2008 to 2014, I was on the farmer's market board, replacing Emily Riley as the city representative. Most amazing board to be on. Fast forward now, I have the pleasure, privilege, honor of being on the board again, really through the work that I do now at our food pantry, because we get donations every week, from the downtown market, from the Felton market. The synergy around that is so incredible, and so when you talk, I love hearing that this dais, you all understand, this has been a long time coming, Bonnie mentioned the same thing, this vision and this excitement about what we have before us, this for you, the next legacy, is stunning, it's amazing. I want to think about, in your staff report, it refers to 84 stalls, that's 84 businesses just alone. The economic energy that's going to come out of this vision of the civic plaza that's expanding to do the things that you, that you know you want to do, I love hearing your thoughts on, it's been so phenomenal for us to have the partnership with the city and get it to this point, it's so exciting. As just one board member, we have the most dynamic board, it's so amazing. When you think about how many are the farmers, how many are different vendors of things that come to the market every week, I'm hoping that you get a phone call from Nash is traveling right now. Thank you for bringing this to this point. The staff report is amazing in terms of letting all of us know what the visions are, and we know it's not set in stone, it's the next step. I'm just so thankful I get to be on the board and be part of it with all of you, with your vision to take it to the next level. But that economic driver, we need to remember how huge that is with all of the visions that's being planned, not just the Wednesday market, but all of it together. So, thank you for bringing it this far, I'm excited for the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir, welcome. Good afternoon. You look like a farmer.
I dressed for the occasion. Thank you for having us here today, and thank you Bonnie for the great work. I don't know if Nash can come and talk to us, but I just think this is more than just the farmer's market. As a farmer, you know, I, we're in Watsonville, South County, it's important to have something that represents our industry, right? I mean, we are, you know, mostly in this county, supported by a really strong agriculture industry, and this could be a gateway for the tourists, for a lot of people to understand what this industry means to this county. I talked to Jess Brown at Farm Bureau, and he said, you know, this would be a great opportunity for them to join us here, also to kind of promote what we have in this county, and I think the city of Santa Cruz could really be the gateway. So, I think for us farmers to have a permanent place is amazing, you know, this is so important. If you can cover it so we can be here year-round, that would be great. And I think we should have more than just one farmer's market in downtown, I think we should have two or three every week, so people can just come shop, come back and shop again. So, I think this is just an amazing opportunity, and I really appreciate the support.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else in chambers wish to comment on this item? Anyone online wishes to? Good, we'll go to the person online, good afternoon and welcome. Person online, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Let me, give me just a second, I am trying to navigate this from the south of the border, this is Nash Dillon, the executive director for Santa Cruz Community Farmer's Market.
Well, we can hear you and welcome, we're glad you're here.
Okay, I think, I think I got this thing worked out now. What a day it's been. So, first of all, I want to, I'm getting an echo, hold on, let me just. First thing I want to do is thank the city council for reviewing this proposal to develop a permanent farmer's market site at the existing footprint of the library, and enhancing the civic neighborhood of the downtown. I think this is just an incredible opportunity for our community and a long time coming. And I want to put out a special thanks to city staff and specifically Bonnie Lipscomb for her tireless effort and unwavering support and dedication since really 2016, trying to find a solution for permanence. And what, I think what we've done is taken the opportunity that we were given, kind of the good fortune, to leverage up to a bigger idea that supports not only our farmers but all the institutional events that call Santa Cruz, downtown Santa Cruz home, and create new opportunities that for our growers, our incubator, startup food businesses that we already support, that we've never been able, would never have been able to do before. And so, the development of, of a public market and all of the necessary infrastructure would, would really provide that opportunity, not to mention provide the community the gathering space in downtown that it's always wanted. You know, the creation of a public space in downtown has been discussed for so many decades, and it obviously continues to be a high priority of the community, and the opportunity to evolve the use of an existing publicly-owned piece of real estate intended for future public benefit is something that does not come around very often. So, this is clearly our best opportunity to create that vision. Done right, this platform will provide new, much-needed opportunities for our local farmers, provide Santa Cruz a guaranteed food distribution site in downtown, incubate new food businesses, and provide plug-and-play event space for new and existing venues. All the, all the while, activating a district in downtown Santa Cruz, and at its core, is based on Santa Cruz ag, local food culture, and represents the many faces of the community's creative efforts. So, I know I'm out of time here, but let's envision a space that is designed around our existing needs and build into the necessary infrastructure, those things that allow for us to grow into the future. Let's envision a well-designed space, thank you city council members for calling that out, that captures the architecture and the natural beauty of the neighborhood. Let's envision an experience that encourages a sense of belonging, safety and utility. Not only do I encourage the council to support this project, I also ask you to seriously consider the positive contributions this development will have on our collective desire to see Santa Cruz's downtown be as successful as it deserves to be. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Ms. Dillon, thank you very much for going out of your way to call in this afternoon, we understand you're in transit, and we appreciate your commitment over so many years to this wonderful community asset, and thank you very much for finding a way to call in this afternoon, we appreciate it. Do we have anyone else online? We'll take the next person online, online, good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, Mayor Keely and council-elect, this is Lyra Philippidi calling in, in full support of the new location for the downtown farmer's market, both as the interim site during construction of Lot 4 and as a long-term home. The proposal for a permanent structure for the market where the library is that can be activated with various market activities all week is exactly what our community and the market needs. Having the ability to also expand that footprint for larger events gives so much leeway for various types and sizes of community celebrations, and overall, I think it's super exciting. I'm also in full support of more affordable housing and things like the Workforce Housing Act that's currently gathering signatures, but I wonder if combining housing with this space is conducive with the full flexibility and focus on community activity and space activation that could be achieved without it. Of course, if including housing is the only way we can fund the full scope of infrastructure needed for the market and community space, then it will be necessary to include it there too. It would be good if a feasibility and legality analysis could be done, both options, as well as the possibility of a possible retrofit of some of the existing structure. It has a second floor that could be retrofitted to include the expanded office space, which the employees deemed important for this new era of that site. Hopefully, further analysis of various options can be explored for the benefit of both the council and the community as you go about making these exciting decisions of such magnitude. Overall, I see the future of the market at this location as very promising for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in, very much appreciate it. Ms. Bush, anyone else online? No one else online, anybody with us? One more opportunity, matter of respect for the body, pleasure of the body, the cap, vice mayor is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a motion that I've sent to Bonnie. Thank you. All right, motion to adopt a resolution appropriating $250,000 from the Economic Development Trust Fund to fund site furnishings to activate Lot 16 for the farmer's market, and $150,000 from the infill and infrastructure grant approved budget to fund needed site infrastructure. Part two, motion to choose concept B below for reuse of the existing library site, and to the extent legally feasible, include a preference for affordable housing for city employees, seniors and/or other sub-populations identified in need of affordable housing. And then part three is direct staff to partner with developers- And then part three is direct staff to partner with developers that will contribute to the development of the public, public market space.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Madam Vice Mayor, you may open on your motion.
Thank you. Um, I, I said most of my comments before, it really, this really is about our future and community, and, um, activating our community in, in such a beautiful way. I think the, um, farmers' market board members really articulated that, so I think, um, Concept B really does get to that, um, community space, open space while we meet our need for housing. I added the, the third piece of it because, um, I know this is possible as we engage in public, public, um, private partnerships, that we can count on developers, um, you know, they care about this community, many of them care about this community, I think we can count on developers to contribute to our public spaces and, um, provide these benefits to the whole community, I've seen it with our passeos. Um, so I'd like to see us work with developers that are willing to make that, make those types of contributions to the development of our public space.
Councilmember Newsom on the motion.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, just want to quickly thank Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson for bringing this motion forward, happy to support it. I think, uh, Option B provides, uh, great balance, uh, and, uh, really best of all options, it provides, um, permanent home for the farmers' market, um, more office space for city staff, and, uh, more affordable housing, and, uh, down, uh, public plaza in downtown that people can, uh, kind of, uh, that our community can gather at. So, very happy to support this motion, just want to thank the vice mayor for, uh, bringing this forward, and thank the farmers' market, market board for all their work.
Further debate or discussion, councilmember Golda.
Thank you. If I may, I'd, I'd offer a friendly amendment, where you put affordable, if you could do affordable or workforce, that's, yes, accepted. Is that okay? I think it's on there twice. And if I, if I may, the reason being is some of our well-paying jobs, they don't qualify for low income, but they, for example, entry-level police officer or somebody, um, you know, working for AMR or a nurse or something like, they, they, they might not have qualified for that, but there's still a need for housing for those folks, and so, um, that's my intention behind that.
Second, consider a friendly amendment by the maker of the...
Yes, accepted.
Yes, second, so accepted.
Thank you. Um, I'm really excited that you've added this in here, I think this is a great motion. Um, another thought, and this doesn't have to be in the motion, but another thought that I have in terms of direction regarding the bathroom, we saw at LEAG, those automatic bathrooms, and I know they installed them on the wharf in Capitola, we could talk to Capitola how they're going, but you, where you, it's like a robot shuts the door, you have time, it cleans it automatically in between every use, and I don't know how well they're working, but I'm sure you're industrious, you'll figure it out, but I would just say, rather than a porta potty or something that staff has to come and clean a couple times a day, we might look into the automated restrooms, and that's my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Further debate, councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, I'm, I'm in support of the motion, and actually have a couple additional questions that maybe the maker and the second could consider as well. Um, I'm really, uh, I really resonated with the mayor's comments about kind of prioritizing, uh, the farmers' markets, and then it's, you know, um, office space, and then thinking about, um, housing. And then also, the last public speaker, uh, you know, I thought she raised a really important point that, um, I don't know if I fully understand, I mean, of course, uh, Bonnie mentioned that we have a legal requirement to, um, basically notice that we have this, this property available, but if we're developing it ourselves, um, I don't actually know if we have to move forward with housing. Um, and so, I wonder if there is a path forward where we are moving forward with Concept B, that we are provided some additional information back to council as we get a little further along with the process, that, um, we are, you know, completely aware of this parallel path around not, so just prioritizing the farmers' market and office space, what are truly the limitations of that? I'm, I'm just not sure I fully understand that at this point.
Is that a question to staff under the motion, or, tell me what you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm really not sure at this point, I, I, I maybe offer a friendly amendment, but I need some help crafting it, Bonnie, I'm not, and maybe, maybe you could help a little bit with this.
I, I, I think one of the things that I, I was hearing is that you would like to, to better understand, like, are we legally required to have housing on the site? And, um, you know, this Surplus Land Act is, is pretty complicated, with that said, we have our city attorney's office, and we have, um, we definitely have some consultants in the area and legal counsel that have, have weighed in on past parcels, so, for example, um, when we went through, um, for the disposition of the hotel property, we had to, um, declare it surplus and put it out and follow the noticing. Um, my understanding of the most recent changes to the Surplus Lands Act is that if we're taking down the library, if we're not just reusing it for a government purpose, that, that would trigger this noticing. With that said, I think one of the things we can easily commit to doing is to research this, um, and bring back both from the city attorney's office and any additional support, definitively what our options are related to housing.
That would be very helpful, um, mayor, would you like me to try to articulate a friendly amendment to that?
Let me, let me see if it's, if this is acceptable to you, uh, unless there's an objection, we just got a commitment, they'll return. So if you're okay with that, we're okay?
Mayor, I, I agree with that, I think that work is embedded in this next work around the, the feasibility phase, so that'll be part of our research and, and happy to ensure that that's included.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, we good on that? That's satisfactory, very good. Alright, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, um, Bonnie, if you could add the, the word workforce in, um, next to the second line, affordable housing or workforce up there as well, and then I just wanted to make sure, um, of, uh, councilmember Golda and, um, Mr. Dillon talked about the architecture and, and sort of staying consistent with the surrounding architecture, would you like that added language, or was the discussion of, yeah, I have that added language? So, let's see, um, choose Concept B below for reuse of the existing library site, and to the extent legally feasible, include a preference for affordable or workforce housing for city employees, okay? Um, I can't, should I just add, um, to that, to number two, um, with a, with a direction to stay with the integrity of surrounding architecture, does that work? Sorry, I can't think on the fly. Okay, consistent, consi, okay, so for the architecture to be, for the design to be consistent with the architecture of City Hall?
There we go.
Okay.
Nice again.
Could I push back on that a bit? I mean, the, the, the design of City Hall is more or less colonial, and some constituents may not have an affinity for colonial, so maybe we could do the prior one with, um, the surrounding area?
Surrounding architecture.
Rather than defining specifically, although I appreciate the, yeah.
Surrounding architecture. Yes.
What we typically would do when we get to the design phase is, we could bring forward to you several different designs, and then you could give us feedback on the style that you like, and then we can move forward from that.
Okay. Yeah, surrounding architecture. Right, does that work for you?
It works for me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, councilmember Trigaro.
Thank you so much for considering.
Further? Further? Clerk will call the roll.
That, that, I feel like that's the exact opposite, because it says, yeah.
Go ahead.
It's the exact opposite, because surrounding architecture, by then, there's going to be all the new design buildings downtown, I'm specifically saying the design of 809 Center Street. I like the brick patio, I like the white, I like the arches, and I think keeping it consistent is aesthetically pleasing, and so, I am recommending that. That is what I'm recommending.
So let, uh, let me, let me slow it down just for a second, let me reference again the, the motion. Okay, okay, now I see, alright.
Other side of that block also has the same style, the two buildings that are planning on staying are the same style, I think it will be consistent and it'll look nice, that's why I said that.
Okay, so we are now debating, we're under debate on...
Yeah, I apologize for...
We're not calling, we're not calling the, the roll yet, so what would you like to do about that?
I would like it to say that surrounding architecture at 809 Center Street.
Okay, that is a, you're offering that as a friendly amendment, does the vice mayor consider that a friendly amendment?
I, I do, I think, I think we still get to it, um, you're saying surrounding can be a really wide berth, and it could include, and so you're articulating that the architecture won't be exactly like 809, but it will be, 809 is our center point of what we consider as surrounding. I think, I think we still get to both of your concerns, if we say, yeah.
Hold on, I, I, I want to give Ms. Bush an opportunity. Councilmember Golda, work with Ms. Bush on this language here.
I just want to confirm that it's surrounding architecture of 809 Center. We're gonna put 809 Center in there, but not narrow it down just to...
Well, while you're considering that, a clarifying question from councilmember Newsom.
Clarifying question, it seems that you're wanting architecture, but it sounds like you're more talking about color schemes, uh, building materials, uh, surrounding, not just technically colonial architecture itself, so, would you be fine with, I mean, because you're talking about, you know, the brick patio, the, the whites, uh, colors, the building materials, that sort of thing, would you be fine with the building designed to be consistent with the building materials of 809 Center Street, but not being a colonial architectural...
I do not, no, I think that's, I, I, that seems absurd to me, like, I'm sorry, I get it, something's gonna offend everybody, every day, everywhere, this is, this is City Hall, this is a historic building, I thi, I feel strongly, that, I mean, that it's beautiful, I think it's one of the most beautiful buildings we have down here, and I don't feel like, um, you could put a, I, no, I, I, I'm not saying that, I am saying exactly that, the Spanish style.
Oh, the, okay, okay, I didn't know if it was just building materials or actual styling.
Maker of the motion.
I don't think we need to solve that problem today.
Yes, agree.
And I think this gets to both of your concerns.
Yes.
Further on the motion. Okay, we're good, we're good.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Brunner has recused herself, uh, Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Motion passes and so ordered. We're gonna give councilmember Brunner an opportunity to rejoin us here as we go into our last item, so let's just take a moment here. Thank you, thank you all for being here. We're on item number 27, this is user charges for wastewater services, we have presentations from our public works department, and, uh, you don't even look like Katie at all, it says on my, uh, I'll bet you're not Katie Stewart, but, uh, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Kevin Crossley, Assistant Director, City Engineer, Public Works, I'm gonna be teeing up this item and then handing off, uh, speaking to a couple other folks. Uh, we thought, uh, we, we chose this picture on screen intentionally, um, we don't know exactly when it was taken, but it's from the early 1960s, and, uh, many of the buildings and structures in the picture were not new when the picture was taken. Uh, and also, um, we would like to invite you down for a tour of the facility if you need some inspiration on different, uh, architectural motifs, uh...
Okay, okay. Challenge accepted.
Yeah, the, uh, some of those buildings have red tile roofs and, um, um, most importantly are still in service, some 60-plus years later. Uh, and it, frankly, the last time we've made major reinvestments to our wastewater facility is over 30 years ago. Uh, since then, we've done a lot of other things right with the facility and our utility enterprise, uh, we've met all of our regulations and permit requirements, we've maintained our pumps and pipes, and we've adopted balanced budgets paired with gradual rate increases. But we're transitioning from a period of maintenance mode to a, a cycle of renewal and major reinvestment. And to be successful, we need to keep doing what we've been doing, which is setting rates that are fair and equitable, and enable the city to continue a legacy of responsible financial and environmental stewardship. With that, it's my pleasure to hand off, uh, speaking duties to our co-presenters, Katie Stewart, uh, she's our Senior Professional Engineer, she's been with the city for about six years, she oversees a team of engineers who work on our wastewater, stormwater, uh, landfill and flood control projects and other programs, and she's currently leading, uh, the early design stages of a $60 million electrical upgrade, uh, at this same facility you see on screen. And, uh, we also have Eric Helgason with, uh, Bartle Wells and Associates, uh, they're an independent financial advisor, they helped us with, uh, the rate analysis and capacity charge analysis, uh, Bartle Wells has been in business about as long as some of the facilities that are on the picture here, and, um, he's been working in the utility finance sector for over 15 years. And finally, I wanted to acknowledge the contributions from a couple of the key staff in the city, Christina Alberti, our Principal Management, Anuslan Public Works, and Kyle Peterson, and the entire, uh, Santa Cruz Municipal Utilities Team.
That's very kind of you to recognize them as well, thank you. Ms. Stewart, welcome, whereas, you don't look like Ms. Stewart either.
Saving the best for last, I guess.
I see. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council, my name's Eric Helgason, and, as I said, I'm with Bartle Wells Associates, and, um, as a principal on the project, and, um, I guess with the firm as well. And, uh, I also want to thank everyone for their hard work, um, Kevin, Christina, Katie, um, it's a, there's a lot of, uh, data that needs to be pulled together, and a lot of analysis that needs to be done, so really appreciate their, their effort. Um, today I'm gonna be going over the, uh, touching on the enterprise, going over the rate study process, talking about the drivers for our recommendations, then ultimately going into our, uh, financial and rate recommendations, and then I'll turn it over to Katie to talk about affordability and next steps. Um, so the, the plant that, that Kevin described provides service to over 130,000 residents, um, uh, treats over 10 million gallons a day, and those residents are in both the city and the county, and the county contributes some of the, their portion of costs, um, to the city's treatment plant. Um, the plant had, does a number of, uh, cool things, I would say, there's, um, uh, uh, green, uh, energy investment, so the plant has, um, produces, has a lower carbon footprint and less electricity costs because of the cogen and solar investments, it also provides, um, recycled water to help the depleted groundwater basin. Uh, additionally, 160 miles of, um, collection system lines, um, bring waste from over 24,000 uh, city accounts, um, and it's important to note that about five, uh, 95% of those are residential accounts, so that's the vast majority of the, uh, what's being served. So all of this is done by the, the sewer enterprise, which is a self-supporting enterprise, so, um, rates are the primary source of funding these activities, and because of that, rates need to be set at the level that's adequate to provide this service. So the goal of our study was to ensure that the rates are sufficient, uh, bring in the level of revenue, um, to fund the, um, operating capital, um, debt service, all of the, the costs that are identified to provide the service, but the rates are legally compliant. But the rates are legally compliant, a big driver of that is Proposition 218. Um, rates can exceed the cost of service and rates, uh, need to be proportional to the service provided. Also, we wanted to align, you know, rates are aligned with city objectives, providing sustainable infrastructure. And we also, finally, we wanted to minimize the impact on rate payers. Um, this is the first outside review of the rates in quite some time. So we, um, knew we had to make some updates, but we wanted to be very mindful of updates we made to minimize the, uh, the impact to, to different customer groups. The overall process of the study is to gather and analyze, um, customer data, budgets, capital plans, um, bring it all together in a long-range financial plan where we project the, the total costs and revenues out into the future. And at this step, we identify the amount of rate revenue that's needed to, um, keep everything funded. And, um, once we identify the total level of rate revenue needed, we then, um, alloc, uh, allocate costs based on how, um, customers, uh, how, how customer use drives costs and, um, proportionally allocate the rate revenue, um, to reflect that. Finally, we design rates to have, um, to also reflect, uh, the proportional cost of service to the customers. The last step is the Prop 218 process, and that's where we are today. Um, we're asking the council to, um, allow the, um, permit the prop, uh, mailing of Prop 218 notices. Um, the Prop 218 has substantive and procedural requirements. The substantive requirements are what I mentioned before, which are accomplished in the cost allocation and rate design steps, um, to not exceed the cost of service and have proportional rates. The procedural requirements are that, um, the city must send out notices of the maximum rates that can be adopted at least 45 days prior to a public hearing. And then, um, if less than a majority of the customers submit protests, the council then may, um, move forward with deciding to adopt rates up to that maximum level. So one of the, um, significant drivers of the rate increase is the, uh, capital needs. As Kevin mentioned, we're in, uh, this, the enterprise is entering kind of a renewal phase. And a number of, um, uh, projects have been identified. The enterprise performed a, a capital improvement plan and that was incorporated into our analysis. Um, over the next five years, there is roughly $56 million in improvements. And a, and a significant portion of those are related to the wastewater treatment facility. In the near term, they're completing a headworks project. And in the long term, they're looking to, um, do significant electrical upgrades. In addition to the capital needs, um, other drivers of the need for, for rate revenue are, um, debt service. There's currently about a million dol, a million and a half dollars of debt service. And we're recommending that, um, in our plan, uh, one of the assumption was to in, in, uh, finance a portion of the electrical upgrades. Um, so that would be about an additional two and a half million dollars of ongoing debt service. Um, also, there's operating cost inflation. Next year, we're projecting costs to increase by about 8%. Um, this is due to rising costs of chemicals, chemicals, shared facilities, and anticipating contract negotiations and some other, um, inflationary factors. Um, over the course of the five years, we anticipate that would taper down to roughly 4%. But, um, we want to keep our projections to be on the conservative side to ensure that revenues are sufficient to, uh, fund operations. Finally, we also want to maintain prudent fund reserves. And, uh, we do that by essentially keeping revenues in line with, uh, costs. The city has done a good job of continuously increasing rates with inflation and maintaining those reserves, uh, up to this point. So we developed, um, projections identifying the future funding needs and evaluating the, the rate increases. Um, we propose, uh, phased-in rate increases over the next five years, um, initially beginning with, um, several 8% increases to the revenue and tapering down to 7%. Uh, looking in the long term, this is a position the city to, um, hopefully be able to move to more inflationary increases up after that, um, depending on, you know, how our inflation projections line up with. It's been a little more volatile lately than, than we've had in the past, so we can't guarantee the future, but it's our best projection. One other thing to note is that, um, initial bill impacts will not necessarily line with the overall revenue, um, needs because we also did update rates to reflect the cost of service. And there are some adjustments to, um, customer classes, um, based on strength and usage that, um, will fall, uh, differently than that overall amount. This shows a, a picture of the financial plan. Um, the columns are the total expenses and they, we boiled it down to operating costs, debt service, and the rate or cash-funded capital. And then the green line is the total revenues of the enterprise. So just maintaining balanced budgets, keeping the revenues in line with expenses. Some years, expenses are a little higher, some are a little lower, but keeping the overall reserves even in the, the long run. So we have a few recommendations for the, for the rates. Um, for the residential rates, we're recommending to maintain the existing structure, um, where you have fixed monthly rates for single-family and multifamily. And you also have the low sewage producer rate, um, which, uh, goes into effect if customers use less than, um, 2, 2.25 hundred cubic feet, um, in the winter. We also are recommending, um, on the commercial side, to transition to a uniform fixed charge and then have the, um, strength differentiation be in the variable charge. So the fixed charge will be consistent, um, for each commercial customer, no matter what strength category they're in. And then the, the differentiation will be reflected in the, uh, variable rate. We, um, also are recommending combining the hotel class with the medium class because there is only a slight differentiation in the rates before. And we feel that there's not really a compelling reason to not group those customers together. We, in addition, because of these changes, we also, um, recommend phasing in the, um, the adjustment for the medium and the high-strength classes over two years instead of having it just all, um, go into effect in the first year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Well, we've been waiting for you. Good afternoon.
And city councilmembers. Um, the graph you see in front of you is just a summary of, uh, comparable-sized agencies in our region. And I want to really emphasize where we are with our current rates, which is below average, and our proposed rates, where we're s, a little bit higher, but still staying below average. Um, and to speak to rate affordability, I think this is something we all think about in our community, we have kind of two major points we want to highlight. The city has recently launched a utility customer assistance program. Um, that is a $25 credit to the entire Santa Cruz Municipal Utilities bill. Uh, that program was launched this month, um, sort of a soft launch. And, uh, outreach around that program and in, uh, is going to begin in April. Um, the program also offers late payment fee waivers, leaked attention assistance, and future dated payment arrangements. Um, additionally, Eric also highlighted this, um, but we do offer the low sewage producer rate. Um, that reduces a single-family bill by over $25. Um, and that is due to the, our rates are designed based on the cost of service, so it costs money to treat wastewater. If you're producing a lot less wastewater, you are then offered a credit. Basically, with the low sewage producer rate, that rate is automatically applied every month. So every customer in the residential, uh, single-family and multifamily classes, um, is automatically enrolled in that lower rate if they meet the program criteria. And looking ahead to next steps, um, we are here today on March 25th. Um, and our next steps in this process would be seeking authorization on the proposed 218 notice mailer. Um, that would go out soon after this council meeting, if that is the recommendation. Um, our notice period then would be between April and June. And we will return here on June 10th for our public hearing, um, with our planned rates to be effective July 1st. That concludes our presentation, and we're here for questions.
Thank you very much. We will start with, uh, Councilmember Golda, I believe has a question.
Two real questions. First question, um, is, do you meter the sewer output? So, or just the water input that goes into residential use?
Um, primarily, no. Um, so it is based on a customer's water usage and then we assume a conversion to the sewer rate, um, based on each type of customer. So a single-family home rate will have a different assumption on how much water we think is being generally used for irrigation versus actually entering the wastewater system for treatment.
Do you generally, like, assume for irrigation? Eric, do you know? Just out of curiosity, I'm sure it's higher in the summer months or there's things around.
So for, for the study, we, we looked at, um, winter water usage, like, how the, um, low sewage amount is determined. And, um, I believe it was, uh, the average was around four, um, HCF per month for, um, single-family residential in the winter.
Okay, and then what was it for the winter, did you say, I'm sorry?
Oh, uh, about four, uh, hundred cubic feet, uh, per month.
Or the, so that would be the winter, and then what about the summer, did you say?
I, we, we were focused on the, the sewer, um,
Okay.
inflow, so we didn't really.
I just was curious because, uh, I just didn't know how you measured. I didn't know it was measured in, okay, thank you. And then my second question, second real question, is we, we spoke a lot about the microplastics that can go out into the bay, uh, via washing machines and whatnot. And my question was, since we, we're determining where this wastewater is going out, the outflow, it's either out in the bay or in the back pumped into the, the wells, right? Is there any thought around mitigating it at that point? Is it too cost, um, ineffective at this point? Or, I know you go through a comprehensive filter process before putting it back, but just.
No, that's a fantastic question. Um, we are not currently regulated for microplastics, but it's something we are studying. Um, one of our capital improvement efforts that we have going on is a master plan study for the wastewater treatment plant. And we are evaluating things like PFOs, chemicals of emerging concern, and microplastics as part of that study.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see how that happens because while we're looking at that microplastic filter for the washing machines and its feasibility, I'd be curious here too. Thank you, those are my questions.
Are there any other real or unreal questions that councilmembers may wish to ask? Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I think these are real questions. How do, how do you address, um, the need of monolingual Spanish-speaking houses in terms of noticing? Do we, do we do noticing in Spanish?
Apparently, our noticing is in English.
Okay, I think that's maybe a gap that we should think about for the next time, or even this time. Um, I know that we can't necessarily do everything in English and Spanish for every household, um, because not every household's monolingual Spanish-speaking. But if there's a creative way to think about how to, um, nail down sort of by census tract where, where, which areas might be, I don't know. I don't have a solution, but, um, that might be a gap. And then sort of a similar type of question, how, um, are we, how are low-income households, um, made aware of the financial support that we are able to provide?
For the U, uh, Utility Customer Assistance Program, um, I am not an expert on that, unfortunately. Um, but our Santa Cruz Municipal Utilities, um, uh, group is working on that noticing strategy and that's going to begin next month, but I'm not sure of the exact details of that. Um, we do, uh, have it listed here though in the presentation, so hopefully if anyone's listening in, they can hear that it is available. And I know it came to council also back in November as well.
If I could chime in on that really quick, I appreciate that question, uh, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson. That's certainly something we can look at. I know that in the past, I believe the Water Department has put notices out in English and Spanish. We're happy to explore that, um, appreciate the spirit behind the question and ensure that our outreach is also intentionally reaching all members of our community. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
I was, uh, just looking at the application for assistance today and it is all in bilingual on the website, um, for the U, uh, UCAP program. And, um, because we have to send so many notices out through, uh, real mail, uh, it's not feasible to do them both bilaterally, but we can, uh, direct people to our website, which is easy to make in, uh, as many languages as we feel appropriate.
That's a great solution.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, Councilmember O'Hara?
I, I was just gonna follow up with, um, the Vice Mayor's question about the customer assistance program. I actually have a little bit of information on this. Um, I think it is, and certainly the city manager probably has additional information, but I think it's a phased approach. Um, there has been some, um, strong collaboration with PG&E on identifying parcels that, um, qualify for service, uh, I mean, for incentives and/or reductions, um, through PG&E. And so I think there's going to be a phased, um, engagement with, with folks that have been identified as low-income through that, that channel.
For the questions and comments, Councilmember Brunner.
Thank you, um, I had similar questions, um, regarding ensuring that the noticing and the public, well, at least the noticing, um, was available. Maybe, there's an example in the packet and, um, that it had maybe two-sided English, Spanish. I think that could be, um, achieved. And I think anything that has to do with, with rates increasing, um, it's really important that we ensure reaching all of our users. And also, the, uh, Utility Assistance Program or any financial assistance or exemptions, that, um, it's reaching the addresses and not the customer or the property owner. Because there are a lot of renters that do not get, they're not a customer. They don't get the bill, they're not the customer, they're not the property owner. And so, um, I think those are important, um, nuances to call out.
I just want to make, make one comment on the, um, the notice itself. And the city attorney could weigh in as well if I misstate. But, um, the, the 218 notice is also a, you know, legal document. You have to follow the, uh, the requirements set forth in 218. Um, so not, not with the translation, but with the mailing to addresses. I believe the strategy is to, um, the consti, in the constitution, it requires mailing to the property owners. Um, and then the, there are, uh, the plan is to also mail to the customer addresses as well.
Great, that was the, the nuance I was trying to pull out. Rather than mailing to customers, to mailing to the customer, the addresses of the wastewater. Uh, I'm gonna give an example, there are many, um, customers that don't live at the site. They might live in San Jose, for example. So their, their bill and the information, the mailer would go to their, not where this, the wastewater user address is. So I understand, it should be all of the above, so.
Proposition 218 is part of California Constitution, Article 13(c). And it requires mailing owner, um, mailing notice to the owner of the parcel as shown on the assessor's parcel records. There's also a state statute called the Prop 218 Omnibus Implementation Act that provides for mailed notice to a customer list. And so generally, it's done to both. And then a protest filed by either the customer or the property owner would count as a protest for that particular parcel.
I understand that. I, I, I think, um, the, the parcel owner, the property owner should get the mailings. I'm not contesting that, right? I just think the, the address as well should also be notified. And then my question was, for low income or, um, those needing assistance, I'm just not sure how that works if, if there's, um, one bill held by a property owner who is not low income. And so therefore, they're passing on rates to renters.
My understanding of the program is right now it's being, uh, rolled out into single-family homes where typically, um, if you're receiving the bill, you are, it's just to one property. Um, there are a lot of challenges with, with rolling a type of program that out to multifamily properties. And I think the city team is working on developing how we might reach those customers.
Ooh, okay, I mean, there are a lot of duplexes and, you know, options that are out there. And so I think it's important for as many people to be notified. Um, I, I think I've expressed my point in that we reach all people when it comes to rate increases. And this is a significant amount over a period of time. And for those on fixed incomes, And for those on fixed incomes, single parents, you know, it's good to be notified and to know what's coming and to know what options of assistance could be out there for them. So the noticing, the public hearing, all of that, I think, is essential.
Councilmember Brunner, I'll just add to Katie's comments. We appreciate the theme of feedback we're collecting from the council this afternoon. This is the first part of a multi-stage public hearing and public noticing requirements under Prop 218. And we will help to ensure that we have a robust and accessible engagement process around this work, including capturing the feedback we've heard from the council today. And happy to bring more details about that at future hearings as we move through this process.
Thank you. I have one last comment, and it's kind of on the design of the example postcard. I would highly recommend really bringing up the URL of the city website. It's buried. It's a whole bunch of text. And looking at it, I don't even know where to start. So bringing cityofstancacruz.com/sewer-rates all the way to the top, bold, big, like, I wouldn't even know where to start, especially if it's not, if I'm not an English speaker. Like, just seeing that if I have, you know, if you can't do the whole thing in Spanish, at least a Spanish tagline, like, in Spanish for more information, and here's the URL. So I'd like to provide that direction here as well.
That's great feedback. We are happy to look at those options while also ensuring that we're abiding by the strict requirements of Prop 218. I think what you're suggesting, though, Councilmember Brunner, is totally doable. We'll look at those opportunities as we finalize the noticing.
And so I don't know if the direction here is good enough, but I am prepared to add just a little tweak in the motion if need be for that direction.
I don't think it requires further direction. We're happy to capture that and ensure, to the extent we can, folding in the suggestions.
Councilmember Chigueras recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to emphatically support Councilmember Brunner's comments on communication, language, and attempts to contact multifamily units as well as low-income. I'd also like to support Vice Mayor Calentri's comments about the accessibility of language here. I think when I looked over this, I really felt that takeaway of times are hard right now. And for many of our constituents and those that will see this rate change, a proposed 44% over five years is quite substantive for those with fixed incomes or single-parent households like myself. Now I enjoy a two-income household because I have the income from city council. But, you know, originally, I thought about contacting staff and saying, you know, could we reduce this annual increase by 5% or extend it over a longer period? And I really get that considering of delaying these projects to ease that financial impact on our customers is really difficult. You know, a lot goes into these projects and trying to find it. And so what does remain to us upon hearing that these 8% increase on costs are correlating to the 8% that we'll be passing on, is this communication. And I'm hearing from you that in April, this new program will start. But I think making sure that our customers know as quickly as possible that there is some relief available. $27 off of maybe $55 bill is huge for that customer. And I don't think that people are really able to access that information the way we hoped that they would. So I just, once again, want to make sure that I support the comments from that and really acknowledge that times are hard and uncertain for vulnerable community members and for our working families in this community. And 44% increase over five years is truly substantive. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues across the dais here, and I actually do think we need to provide specific direction on Spanish in the noticing. And I'm not entirely certain to what extent. I imagine that you might have something that you're trying to add, so I'd be happy to wait for that. But I do want to suggest that I also emphatically support that. I think we need to give very specific direction on the noticing and accessibility around it.
Councilmember Brunner?
Thank you. I did want to just add, and I did send a motion in case it went there to Bonnie Bush, city clerk, just highlighting the points that I wanted to communicate. And one of those parts is to highlight any options of exemptions or financial support, such as the utility customer assistance program, in the written notices on the city website. None of that is currently shown there and at the public hearing to make sure that that is front and center, that it's very clear. So yeah, thank you.
The, excuse me, do we have a motion? I didn't think so. Okay. So we are still under questions and comments by members. Members have further questions at this point before we go out to the public. Members of the public who wish to testify on this item, there's your opportunity to do so. Do we have anyone online? We'll take the first person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Sure, I'll talk. Hey, we borrowed money for this sewer five years ago, and we had vast rate increases then. How's that going? I guess the money wasn't the end of upgrades, was it? Although it was kind of sold that way. When does this touch on the public end? Or can we look forward to another 44% five years from now? You know, I don't think inflation explains any of this. My concerns are vague, but 8%, 8%, 8% some percent, some percent proposed increases, that's got to be a record, don't you think? And you have my attention. I tremble while sort of waiting for the increases to the water bill also coming for that $600 million cost you borrowed. One possible concern has to do with what I continually see as a shell game of financial fund transfers since utilities are monopolies, and they're supposed to only charge for those services and, you know, stay within themselves as an enterprise. But when I see agenda items moving money from sewer because of the rail trail or from the water fund to paper art, I think the public contract trust has been violated, you know, just a little bit. I don't think the last time every customer was mailed on this matter and informed to vote back. Maybe I'm wrong, but as I recall, the clerk recorded a paltry handful of objections, which seems very unlikely if everyone was mailed and it was easy to respond. I'm more concerned with the costs associated with the water department upgrades, which intend to recycle wastewater, maybe not so much. But the part where, there's a lot of uncertainty involving water sharing agreements with other districts, it's just a black hole to me. I don't want to subsidize development of water for other water districts. As far as the approval process, it's no process at all. Depending on a majority of users objecting instead of a voter, majority approval, it's sneaky, it's a bad process, as with a lot of things. Nothing really prevents you from doing the right thing to get majority approval instead of this questionable minimum required by the law. I appreciate Member Brunner's comments about making objections in the process clearer. I'm not sure so far the breakdown of line item costs are apparent in any way. Like, what's it really for? I recall the last time for this around five years ago, the sewer manager said he liked having about $10 million cash sloshing around to spend in case he needed to. You know, I was not impressed with that statement, and this kind of seems like that now. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Do we have anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
I'd like to make a motion. And if city clerk can pull that up. Yeah. And if there's any obstacles to that motion from city staff or city attorney's office, I'm happy to hear.
Well, let me hear your motion. Is this your motion?
This is my motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. You may open on your motion.
So I made my points. This is adjusting the staff recommendation of part two of the motion to approve mailing of written notices in English and Spanish to wastewater user addresses and property owners. And then I added three to highlight any options of exceptions, exemptions or financial support, such as the utility customer assistance program in the written notices, city website, and the public hearing.
Further debater discussion on the motion. Councilmember?
May I ask, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
The, how big is this notice that's going home? Is it a postcard size? Is a letter? Would adding the Spanish add to the cost for mailing?
It might.
Significantly?
It might make it a two-sided, one single page as opposed to...
I just want to know if it's a significant financial impact, because if it is, I have an idea.
Bilingual notices are done routinely. As part of the Prop 218 process, I have no concern whatsoever of us being responsive to that direction, and we appreciate, we appreciate the direction to do so.
Okay. Yeah. The only idea I had is it was going to be significantly in increasing the mailing cost to just put, for Spanish, in, put, "español visita", and like, put the website, and then have a Spanish website. And that was my only suggestion.
Mr. Nguyen?
Good afternoon, mayor members, council members. Nathan Lynn, Director of Public Works. We, staff really appreciates the discussion around the noticing in mailers and being able to incorporate multiple languages as we're noticing the utility customers throughout our region here. We believe we can incorporate an English and Spanish version. There's a cost to that, so I appreciate Councilmember Golda recognizing that. We're estimating a roughly $20,000 additional cost to develop those mailers, and there'll be some additional time to print and make sure that we can still hit our goal of getting these mailers out by, I believe it was April 25 deadline, in order to meet our timeline to bring this back before council in June. So we're happy to do that, and we believe we can incorporate that.
Councilmember Golda.
Then I'm wondering if you'd be amendable to just adding the line to the English and putting the update on the website to save $20,000 when times are tough. And I have to say, I spent my whole 25-year career working with native Spanish speakers in the school community, and they're very resourceful. And if you give them something, they, I'm...
I'm happy to, I'm so shocked at $20,000 to add a Spanish side is the estimate. I'm in the wrong business. I mean, especially with, I just, I, is that truly to add a backside of the postcard that's given in Spanish? It's $20,000 more?
The current mailer is proposed.
Yes, yes.
Who do you like, want to address that question to?
I think I have an answer here.
So the current mailer is proposed will be printed on an eight-and-a-half by, or 11-by-17 sheet, so it's four full sheets of paper. And we fold it down to an eight-and-a-half by five-and-a-half, I think, half-page mailer. So in order to, there's no, it's fully printed, all four sides. So in order to have a fully Spanish version, which is absolutely possible to do, would be basically printing double the amount.
I see.
But we could absolutely modify language to have a section in Spanish directing to a full version of the mailer online in Spanish that would save us having to basically double print and then double mail.
So then I will amend item two, because I don't, I'm not asking for an additional separate Spanish mailer. And that's what I'm hearing, you're estimating a $20,000 cost, because that's additional postage, et cetera. So approved mailing of written notices with a Spanish, a line in Spanish, inclusion of Spanish direction, to the, I mean...
Sorry, if I may just suggest, can we phrase it as including Spanish instruction?
Yes. And a Spanish version on the website of the mailer. I like that idea. Thank you for proposing that, because I definitely, yes.
Okay, let's, so now let's...
Including Spanish instruction.
Okay, so you, do you have the language you want?
Not quite. It's almost there. Now it's there.
Now it's here.
Do you want to say including Spanish instruction to the website or guidance to the website, or?
Yes.
Just leave it including Spanish instruction?
I think, I think that's fine. Do you think it needs to be clarified? Anybody? No, I think that's fine.
Very good. Vice Mayor is recognized.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think this is, this is bringing up a larger conversation around language accessibility that we should maybe have as a, maybe a few of us council members can work with the city manager's office. Many cities provide everything in all languages. And Santa Cruz City Schools, for example, provides everything in English and Spanish, whether it's via email or... So I think, I think we can do more around language accessibility, and I think this gets to what we need to get to. I appreciate the vigilance around how much cost is, because times are tough. But I think in general, our city can do more and can do better around language accessibility.
I appreciate that comment. Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson, we are in the process right now of working on an equitable engagement policy that I think will capture much of this. So I appreciate the emphasis on it tonight from the council. We share those concerns, and we look forward to working with the council as we move forward on a variety of fronts as we engage with the community.
Mr. City Attorney, looking, do you have a comment? And now your lips are pursed. This must be a comment.
Well, I was kind of alluding to this before, but the notice issue specifically deals with notice to a property owner or the owner of the parcel, that's Prop 218. The statutory notice is to the customer that receives the bill. So I'm wondering if that would be consistent with the direction that you envision under, in terms of addresses?
Well, it also says and property owners. So it's not excluding them.
If the, right, the notice would be given to the property owner and customer that receives the bill, like, I mean, sewer service charges are charged on the same bill as the water and refuse collection, right? So...
So maybe it's, instead of crossing out customers, what I'm hearing from you, it might be better under Prop 218 to say to wastewater user addresses, customers who receive the bill and property owners? Or just...
Right, to the wastewater customer at the address where they receive the bill.
I mean, that still doesn't get to the renter who's at the address.
I guess where, what I'm driving at is, that's fine. That would be notice in addition to the notice that complies with the requirements of the statute.
Okay.
There might be more notice being provided to...
So in this case, strictly the customer who receives the bill and the...
And the owner of the parcel.
So the resident or the tenant, the renter, does not need to have this notice of a proposed...
The council can always direct that more notice be given than is required. The planning department, for instance, can generate a list of addresses that includes everyone that resides in a certain area.
I mean, that's what I was trying to get at with the wastewater user addresses. So this now encompasses, I think, what you're hoping is there part of...
I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you. Just to follow up on the current motion, just to make sure I'm completely aware of this. The way it's currently drafted, there could be three parties that receive a notice around one particular parcel. Is that correct? That seems like that's also a significant increase in cost, potentially incredibly significant. The mailing is the most significant from my perspective. I wonder if we could put into some, some language that gets to what the city manager was reflecting on earlier, which is that we, the primary driver is we need to be in adherence to Prop 218. So I think the above and beyond is at the council's discretion, but I do think we need to be thoughtful about not oversaturating to the, to the extent that we are tripling our cost associated with this notice. So I wonder, is there a distinction between the wastewater user address and customers who receive the bill in your mind? Okay. Okay.
The customer who receives the bill, for example, could be a landlord who doesn't live at that address.
Sure. And this...
They would receive it as...
Excuse me, we're not going to do cross-talking here. If you want, if you want to have... to have the floor, ask for the floor. Do you have a response to an item that's been raised here?
I do, and I, I think I have a potential solution. Um, it sounds like what we, what we are legally required to notice to are both the property owners and the customers who hold accounts and pay monthly wastewater fees, and what you would also want to make sure is we don't miss any customers who might be a tenant in a building where they aren't receiving a bill. What we could do by that is generating, I believe it's called like a USPS, like all potential mailing addresses within the city, um, and mail to that list as well, and basically we would debug it with the two existing lists to make sure we're not, um, like triple mailing to any one property, if it's all the same mailing address that would be receiving that.
Good, is that where to go?
Is there any comment on cost?
Um, there'll probably be some increased cost, we will pick, we will pick up some units that are mailing out to the city that aren't a bill holder or a, um, property owner, but I don't think it will be significant.
And to be clear, we're not talking about redundant notices, so those addresses that had already been captured as part of the first two requirements under Prop 218, this would be the delta for those that would not have otherwise received one. Also just wanted to make one other comment that, in addition to the formal noticing we're legally required to provide, and I think this solution that Katie's brought forward is a great one, there will be a lot of other robust engagement that happens outside of the Prop 218 process, with our communications team, which we could put out in both English and Spanish on our socials, uh, as well as, um, a number of other outlets that we use to get information out, so we're committed to doing that as well. I also appreciate, um, the suggestion to ensure we're capturing the intent of your motion.
Thank you so much, everybody, for the input and for looking at it through those different lenses, so I think that, that captures it.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, um, because we got bogged down in the conversation about the noticing, I didn't have an opportunity to say that I'm fully in support of the rate increase, I, I think that, you know, fully aware of the challenges that we, um, as a community, regionally, statewide, nationwide, et cetera, we are experiencing, um, such a high, um, cost of living, um, without these rate increases, this department cannot do the fundamentally important work that you do, day in and day out. So, um, I just wanted to provide that, uh, support for this process, knowing fully well that the public hearing is when we have the opportunity to really hear from the community about the impacts, so I just wanted to provide my support for the department, um, you guys do tremendous work, you, uh, receive, have received countless awards for the work that you do across the different divisions, and you are a full-service department, so I just wanted to provide that perspective, 'cause I know that we got bogged down in the noticing requirements, but the bigger issue here is how do we support the work that you're doing and make sure that our community is fully abreast of these rate increases and that we're providing that opportunity for folks to be engaged.
Further? Uh, in that same vein, we have spent a lot of time figuring out how to notice people so that they'll be aware of this potential increase. I, I wanna, I, I agree very much with what you just said, Councilmember, uh, when we get down to this hearing, when we have it, uh, hopefully it's, it's well-understood that maybe we can debate and discuss the improvements and, that are driving the, uh, the potential for, for wastewater, uh, increases, charge increases, but it, this seems to me we only have two choices here, uh, when we get down to it, assuming for a moment that we think that what is being proposed here, this isn't, it's not a, an increase just for purpose of having an increase, it's because, as you indicate, we have a longstanding plan, we can't decide, no, we're really not gonna do wastewater at this level anymore, or we're not gonna comply with where the state is going here or our own. This is going to happen, and it seems to me we only have two sources of paying for it, the general fund and the rates, and we don't currently underwrite this with any general fund support, so as we invite people to come in and talk about the rates, if we have some debate about whether or not what we're doing that are driving the rates, that's a worthy conversation. If we think that what's driving the rate increases is all legit, then we're really left with the question of, do you wanna break our current structure, which is that this is a user recovery system, a hundred percent user recovery system, which I happen to think is exactly the right way to do it, because at the moment that you pierce that and start providing general fund support, you're now saying, whatever it is we wanna do with the general fund, we have less available to do that because we had a hearing and a lot of people didn't like the rate increase. So when we get to the rate increase, let's be very clear what our choices are, you can do this plan and pay for it with rate increases, or you cannot do this plan, try to scale it back, or you can try to subsidize the rate increases with the general fund. I think we need to keep open our minds about what it is we're going to do until we have the public hearing, but my predisposition is always a hundred percent cost recovery, and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Trigueros?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentori Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye, motion passes and so ordered. Now, we're at the end of our agenda, I believe, at the end of the agenda, any for the business? Any for the business, sir? Well, uh, as it turns out, former vice mayor and current city council member, Ms. Golda, makes a real motion to adjourn, is there a real or unreal second? There is a second by Councilmember Brunner, look at her, she is, yes, she is reluctantly though seconding that emotion, that motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye opposed, so we stand adjourned.